All right, it's nine o'clock. We'll start the meeting. Mr. Enser, is there any corrections or additions to the agenda?
No additions here, Mr. Chair.
There are reports from the commissioners.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Sue Trails and Brown County Evaluation Center.
Salary Administration, Goberba, and then I'm gonna give a little bit on employee recognition.
I've got South Country Health and Brown County Historical Society Finance at regular meeting.
Okay, I've got Sue Trails with Commissioner Bullard. Barry too, R.C.R.C.A. Okay, that will be our agenda for today. We have the minutes, May 1st.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion to accept the minutes. Those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. All right, number two.
Chair, is the monthly report any question of concern?
Next month you could put on there the report that you solved the mystery of missing.
Fondue.
I'm not missing.
I didn't see anything. I did notice, you know, last month I asked about the vehicles and this month the miles were down, so it was just a timing issue or about both of those. I'll move it.
Second.
Motion a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I didn't see things go through the bank where it was very nice again.
Appreciate that. I'm good on.
Thanks. Jean.
Morning. Top ten weather day, I love that. Today, my first item is going to be the claims. I have to apologize, there is a slight adjustment. We have, the claims are one cent lower. It's $236,450.89, not $90. You gotta get it right. So, that's what we bring to you today.
Jean, I had a question on the election system software. That's coming in now, we got $92,000 out in that. Is that everything in there or is that a partial?
The ESNS payment covers the six vote tabulators, the central count machine, and... We had to purchase election ware. It's a computer, standalone computer. It can't be hooked to the Internet or, you know, that kind of thing, cybersecurity kind of thing we had to address. And so that covers, $92,000 covers all of those pieces of equipment. The only thing left would be the poll books, what's that, maybe $18,000? I'm not a hundred percent on that. And we're gonna be deploying that today. The ballot boxes are gonna be taken to the city of New Ulm and CBI in Springfield, the modern part that they keep. We keep the actual computer portion of that system. And, yeah, so we'll be cleaning our storage room a little bit and have some room and make room for the other things we have to put in there. So, work in progress.
That entire thing is locked, correct?
It will be. At this point, there's nothing in it that is usable. The election has passed, but it's got a double lock and two different keys. So it requires entry by two different people during the contest period, which will only be like, what's that, two weeks after each election.
I'll move the claims.
Second.
Okay, motion a second on the claims, any other discussion? If that might be your adjustment upon sound. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, thanks Jean. All right, paying Andrew, move four.
Number four. The... Tile, tile washout repair.
There been many more new ones this spring?
Yeah, we've had quite a few calls also. There's there to roll it now, so. The rain last week has slowed both parties down, so we're back at some of it today. I think we're on thirty-five, forty acres open right now.
I'll move to David, repair.
I'll second it.
Motion a second, any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I had a replacement on Route 20 just east of W30 north of Yanaskin. Is this the large bike? See the four bids? Okay, West County Contracting hasn't worked with Brown County since I've been here, but I've worked with them a couple times at least.
I'll move a little bit, West County Contracting.
I'll second it. Motion a second on the... Good? Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number six.
Number six is bridge replacement, timber bridge replacement in Hurricane Township just west of Ground Road 7. We have four bids for that also, Midwest of the falls, and that too. A little bit under eyes.
Supposedly these bridges be done slowly.
We've got a start date on July 30th, so they can start earlier if it fits their schedule. And then once they start, we start counting work days, so they don't have to start until July 30th.
Do these culverts or concrete already manufactured or do they have to be...
They don't order them until, usually they don't order them until you award it. And then we let them know and then they order it. And then it depends on how busy the manufacturer is, they may not make them for a month.
Do they have to have a timely, before they do get installed?
They have to here before they can be hauled. Once they are strong enough to be hauled, they can be placed.
A little bit...
Oh, sorry.
Okay, motion a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. John, number seven.
Johnny.
Morning.
All right. This item is to consider the approval of purchase of these recaptured eggs using recycling funds for the agricultural plastic recycling program. As you all are aware and sure, egg plastic has become a big deal. There's a lot more plastic out there being used, whether it's on bunker covers, silage, or even round bales. And to date, there hasn't been really a good way for landowners to get rid of that plastic. It's either being disposed of on site or it's being hauled to the landfill. It's a really bulky, really bulky material, and there just hasn't been a good way to get rid of it. So, last year, we started working on a program to work with this company called Revolution Plastics. They're from down south and they actually do recycle the agricultural plastic, turn it back into irrigation tubing and bags, plastic bags, and sell that down in the south. Initially, what we had planned on, or what we're trying to do, is get up to 300 farmers to sign up for the program. If we were able to get 300 farmers within an 80-mile radius, if we were able to get onsite dumpsters for landowners, then the company would come and pick those up from those landowners at no cost. We didn't get anywhere close to that 300 mark. In Brown County, we had 39 landowners sign up for the program. And we did send out multiple letters to, I think it was like 292 landowners to see if they would be willing to sign up. So, option number two now is to work with what they call these recapture bags. They're essentially these giant plastic bags where the landowners can stuff all that plastic into, kind of keep it in one spot. And then, when we get enough of them, we'll have the landowners bring them to a central location as yet to be determined. And then that company will come and pick that up for free. So, that's where we're at right now. So, for those 39 that signed up, I contacted them again to see if they'd be interested in this program because it has been a change. And of those 39 letters that we sent out, we had 15 that want to still participate in the program and try this out. So that's where we're at. As far as what we're proposing to do is to purchase 20 boxes of eggs. Each box has two rolls of bags and there's five bags per roll. And this is just to kind of initially start the program to see if the landowners actually like this or if they're willing to use it or if it's just too much of a hassle and they need to figure out a different one. But the total for those 20 boxes would be $1,240. Now, they don't take net wrap, so if you ever get that question, net wrap is one that nobody's recycling just because it has too much debris in it. But it would be like those things I mentioned before. I was actually just at a farmer's place on Saturday, he was using the program, he's in a different county. He's using this recapture bag program. And he's fitting more like 1,200 pounds inside of one of those bags, not 200 pounds. He's letting it sit and settle down or he puts like his bucket of his skid steer and lets it sit on there for a day or so and really squashes it down. He's able to fit a lot more inside of the bag. So, the farmers are gonna obviously be innovative on how to fit as much of this plastic inside of one of these bags. We're probably gonna get a good chunk of it recycled. Don't put a whole bag, it'd be a lot harder to handle. Right, so the way, good point, so the way he was handling that then and loading it up was he was using his hay spear, just spearing it, loading it that way.
Hopefully they could get it ordered onto their truck, go ahead and get it where it went close to the drop off.
Right.
How's the SCORE funding? You know, I have a little bit of a background from talking with you in the past, but can you just give me a quick synopsis?
So, SCORE funding is passed down from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. It's for the purposes of having recycling monies available to the counties. And with those monies, they can run their recycling programs, whether it be our regular recycling, residential and rural recycling, whether it be hazardous waste programs, programs such as this, composting programs, and anything that has to do with recycling.
Like those bureaus that we talked about in the past, that's through SCORE.
The composting ones, correct?
Yes.
So the participants in this, if they have a neighbor or two that has plastic that they want to bring over, and that's okay?
Yeah, that's a non-issue. This really doesn't have any names that go along with it like they would with the dumpsters. It's just, we're just trying to collect the plastic.
Essentially, what we're doing here is providing seed money to jumpstart the program. It's not gonna be a continual, you know, purchasing of bags. Eventually, that's gonna be self-contained, right?
Correct, yep. Yeah, that's exactly right. So we just want to buy these initial, so each landowner that signed up would get 10 bags to try it out. If they do like it, then they can purchase them themselves. There's a company in Minnesota that distributes them. So if they do want to continue on, they could do that. I would continue though to facilitate through the recycling program the pickups, so I would help them organize the pickup and everything like that.
That's my next question, is where are we gonna drop these and also when do they get picked up and all that kind of thing?
Right, so they get picked up as soon as they have enough to fill a semi. So they're looking at 120 bags to fill a semi. And my thought is though, is that most of these landowners, from what they've been telling me, is they've been holding out of this plastic for quite some time. So my assumption would be that when we initially get this kicked off, that pickup's gonna be fairly shortly after.
The initial one.
Yep, the initial one. And as far as the location, I have to go back and, because I'm gonna call each one of these landowners to tell them about it. I have to look at their addresses and where they're located and find a central spot where you can drop it off. It has to be a big enough area to do that. One thing that I've been considering is someplace open like the fairgrounds. But I have to check into that.
I guess that would be some concern to me as to where they're gonna get dropped because if I'm living next to that and like you said, the initial pickup is gonna be probably full and gone a day. But then it may take considerable length of time for 120 bags to accumulate.
I should clarify that further. When I say the drop off, I mean there'll be a day when everybody brings them in.
Oh, okay, okay. Whole different...
Person who had a car across the street couldn't read it, would it?
Yeah.
I think it's certainly a good program. I think, you know, with recycling, it's important and, you know, considering it's not getting a levy, I think it's SCORE money well spent as far as the seed money, so I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second it. I think it's a great idea to recycle a lot of stuff that would end up in a landfill someplace.
Okay, we have a motion a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, this next item is to consider the approval of the amendment for the agricultural best management loan program for 2018. A few weeks back, we actually had gone to the board, our initial ABMP loan program allotment for 2018. In the past, probably three or four years, we haven't had much interest in the program at all. Only giving out three or four loans total over the last four years. This year, there seems to be quite the uptick in interest. And already, all the funds that were allocated for 2018 have been used and there's already somebody on the waiting list. So we had gone back to the state of Minnesota Department of Agriculture to ask for another $150,000 to add to the program to be able to loan out to the landowners for things such as egg waste management equipment and conservation tillage equipment. And then we just have another complete $4,000 set aside for other practices. There's been a lot of interest in the egg waste management. They're updating their equipment as well as conservation tillage equipment as well.
So this is low interest, correct?
Correct. And the way it works is that they typically are doing that loan through their normal lenders. So Brown County, there are a bunch of lenders that already administer the program. All we do on the county's behalf is sign off whether or not it meets the program requirements. We let the lender know that, the lender processes the loan. So the money doesn't actually come into the county's hands at any point. It just, we just have to approve the project.
So we don't have to handle funds, it's not any administrative, other than processing the loan part of it or processing the application to...
Correct.
So, what might be entailed in egg waste management? Is it more than just equipment or...
So anything that would help to improve water quality. So, let's say they wanted to put in a new manure basin that would qualify. If they want one of those cool liquid manure haulers that would qualify. If they wanted a solid manure spreader, that would qualify as well. Because all of that has become more efficient. For instance, hauling solid manure, it used to slip up horizontally, now it's vertically. And they get a much better, more even manure application instead of just kind of concentrating it.
Move it.
I'll second it.
Motion a second, any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, Ruth, number nine.
So this request before is to accept the resignation of Deanna Alford, who is a full-time social worker. There's seniors and physically disabled adults in the area. And the Human Services Department would be effective May 23, 2018. Due to needing to have this position filled as soon as possible, we ask the board to ratify the posting for the vacancy for this full-time social worker position according to policy.
I'll move it. Second it. Motion a second, any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
This request is to appoint air site as our full-time social worker development was disabled in the Human Services Department. And that would be at the hourly rate of 23.7002, that's grade four in step two. The anticipated start date would be May 23, 2018, and that's contingent on her satisfying the rates of receiving on stream employment and stream results that are satisfactory.
I'll move it.
Oh, sorry.
Motion a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Request is to accept the resignation of Holly Lefty. She would be Highway Engineering Aid. This was a seasonal position and his resignation was effectively second, 2018.
Move it. I'll second it. Motion a second, any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Request is to accept the resignation of Beth Burrows. An interim and part-time cognitive skills educator in the Corporation Department, effective May 1, 2018. We're asking the board to authorize post-statement if needed at a later date for this position of a IP cognitive skills educator according to policy. Right now, we're waiting to see what the New Orleans Medical Center does with this position there. If they don't fill it or have it someone start in the near future on a regular basis, then we may have to look at it again.
I'll move it. Second.
Okay, motion a second, any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number 14.
Request is to accept the resignation of Leah Pearson, full-time dispatcher. And that would be effective May 20, 2018. And authorized post the vacancy for a full-time dispatcher according to policy.
I'll move it.
I'll second it. Motion a second, any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number 14.
This request is asking the board to approve a proposal in amount of $3,500 from Keystone Compensation Group for providing county compensation consulting services in regards to the non-union salary range schedule. And so this would be looking at the 26th salary schedule, consolidating that to a lesser amount such as 13 steps. And then advising us on that implementation.
They're gonna provide a couple options as far as implementation, as far as, and then provide numbers as far as the impact to the county.
Right, yep, and looking at the budget and so forth and how the impact is and how to implement it according to how that would impact the budget over the years. They'll look at the full picture as well of all the staff and county and salary schedules. All of it, at this time, we're looking at the non-union salary schedule.
I think having that data is important and I think it's necessary, so I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second it. Motion a second. As far as the union, I'm assuming that data would be similar to what's...
We'll have him look at the big picture, but at this time, yep, we're looking at currently moving forward with the non-union.
This is information you're looking at to further help you decide whether to propose going from 26 to a 13 possibility. This is not a decision made already to go that route.
No, no.
Okay.
We're looking at...
Just info. Despite I'm uncomfortable to go that route, it can take a little convincing to make me believe that... I have opportunities with other counties. My experience with other counties is they like what we're doing better than what they got. And so I feel hesitant to change because it might not be a good idea.
Yeah, he'll give us some different options and so forth, then look at how much it would cost and all that. And then we'll go from there and say, here's what we gathered from him and what do you think?
Well, we also get a, because if we're looking at doing something like this, we want to look at a... I don't think we want to look at what 2019 looks at, only we want to look at maybe five years down the road because it's gonna take a little time to make us fall into place. How are we gonna do a comparison between the two systems? Will that be included in this part?
We can certainly ask him to guide us on all that.
I don't know if the rest of the board feels that way, but I think it's a necessity to know what this does to us in the future because this transition is not gonna be inexpensive.
I think there was, wasn't there discussion at the committee meeting about how far out we can have them look? I mean, obviously, we're looking at year one, two, and three, but what's the end result in year five? I don't remember the top 10, but I, you know, there was definitely discussion about that. Whether it's gonna benefit us or, you know, just what that long-term impact is.
And when I did call the references, and actually, and all the consultants, they all mentioned that they did work with them on and continue to work with them on, you know, how it impacts going down the road too. So they did, the favorable remarks were that they were able to advise them on all those aspects as well.
Yes, one other thing I would like to see then is, because I'm pretty sure it's gonna take some man-hours to make a transition of turning this whole salary schedule over. And what would, does that, will that be included in the $3,500 or will there be more cost if we would decide to do this? And if they would, you know, are we looking at $5,000 a year or how this all impacts everything? I mean, I want to be comprehensive and make sure that we're not looking in three years and we go, oh man, who was this, who planned this?
Yeah, you know, initially, what he'll look at is giving us some options of, you know, different, how to consolidate the salary schedule from 26 down to let's say 16, some different options using the variances between each step and so forth. But then he'll also look at, you know, the current staff and how to implement that with the current staff. And, you know, and then giving us advice on how it impacts the budget over one year, two years, three years. And then we'll ask him to look at, you know, the, any future impact as well. But however, if, you know, those initial services that they would consult us on, if we want to continue and add more different types of work that they would have to run, you know, numbers and reports, that they would have additional fee for that. They, you know, if we want them to, you know, even look at job descriptions and how they look all and things like that. So each, it depends on what... So each, it depends on what we ask them for.
Mr. Chairman, to the point, the salary grid right now is basically an Excel spreadsheet. So we expect to get a new Excel spreadsheet that if the board approves that consolidation with all the information that, you know, that it's on an Excel spreadsheet, the next year, HR administers the salary plan and the personnel policy based on that. So if this all transpires, we should have a basic administration process in HR as we have currently. But it's, the questions have to be answered on that transition as you run up.
I'd also encourage each of us to take, do a little research to how this works. We have some people in the community that are past commissioners who've dealt with this salary plan for many, many years, they've got some experience that I would ask you, if you know one, or you get the opportunity, use them as a reference, because I think they've got a lot of knowledge we could all gain from using their experience.
Mr. Chairman, I, you know, as far as, I think this is an important step as far as at least having the information and the way to work, because, you know, right now with the labor shortage, I, I really think as far as retention and even recruitment, that this is a necessary step, and it, and I believe we need to have the information as commissioners, because we're responsible, obviously, for the levy and the budget. But I, I think this is reasonable, and I think it's important. I mean, there, you know, there could be some other, if we need some more data in the future, you know, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it, but I think at least going in this direction and looking at, you know, where we sit and what it would actually cost, I think that's a benefit to the employees and also to the community. That's, thank you.
I agree with Commissioner Potter and Commissioner Rucker are saying here, but I think that to get this information is what we need to make a good decision on going forward. So to me, it isn't a lot of money to spend to get some expertise on what might be better or might be, might not be so. I'm supportive of doing this, then at least, and we'll see.
Is it just the phase of a full compensation study, we're not looking at a compensation study at this time?
Yeah, the full compensation study gets to be very expensive.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, do you have a motion? Yeah, I'm supportive of, too, we want Brown County to be competitive, and, you know, it's a complicated process, and we want to understand what the cost is to the county. You know, we're probably one of the only counties with that many steps. Most counties have less steps, doesn't make it right or wrong, I guess either way, it's, it's worked for us in the past, and I guess we just want to understand what the, what the cost would be and the long-term effect is of if we do undergo this. All right, any other discussion?
Right.
See none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
All right, I've been on the Energy Board for a number of years, they did not have this program when we started, this is a federal program, if I remember correctly, that was started in PACE is, because I don't remember, Clean Energy is something, I don't remember anyway, but it, but if you, if any of you remember when we did the courthouse, we updated a lot of the energy issues in the courthouse, it's somewhat similar, the difference in here is that it's for businesses to use, they do an energy audit of their business, and then there's dollars here that they can use to improve, most times lighting, but sometimes other, other parts of it, to improve their efficiency of their business, and, and then it's the recourses, it's repaid through their tax situation, so it would be a, it is a thing where it goes through the other charges offices to repay this part of it. We have quite a few counties, I believe, if there was a, okay, no, I, the, there's, the counties in the southwest area here, we have not used them, but quite a few, several of them have used quite a bit. More, if you get down around Slaton, it's based on the Southwest Regional Development Commission, which is a Slaton area. And so that's how it is activated, there's a person that does this, Robin is the coordinator for that, in that office. It's a program that hasn't been very well-known, and part of this is talked about, the money or the money they would like additional is to do outreach, and by outreach, I mean they would like to get out and touch more businesses, try to get up to more counties, and get more opportunities to do this. It's, it's a fairly significant amount of money, we, we don't, the, the program isn't set up for the, for us to get reimbursed for that part of it, and so that is a, a local cost of doing business. I mean, there's some administrative, but not outreach, and so the outreach would be, I haven't done it yet, is I haven't known where to go, but for, set up a couple of meetings in Brown County, and Robin would come up and talk about this, and try to, places might be like Bankers or other places, I, I just didn't come up with any, I was really convinced of what, but. This is, it's, we've, they've been working on it for a number of years, I'm okay with what, what they're doing, I think it's nice that it is, but when we start dipping into, asking us to dig into the county coffers to make this happen, I'm a little hesitant, I'm a little more than a little hesitant. I, we haven't made a final decision, this was proposed to us about a month and a half or two months ago, and one of the things we asked, and I don't believe we got yet, was how many times it's been used in each county. To the best of my knowledge, I don't think it's going to be used in Brown County. We are on the outer fringes of that area, so it doesn't happen very often here. And what they're going to want to do is, they're going to ask for, they've got a couple of proposals, if you looked at what they're, this is new to me, because I haven't actually, we have a meeting coming up, but we haven't actually saw what their, their options are. The first one would be to end the program, which if we didn't put the six thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars, then that would end the program, I guess. I am not exactly sure what end means, but the other one is to put those kind of dollars in, and then it was, it's kind of turning into a revolving fund, is what they look like they're trying to do with it. I guess that's up to the five of us to decide whether Brown County is interested in getting involved in that. What I would like to do, and I'm not giving, asking for a commitment, I'm like looking for direction, because I do have a meeting in about two weeks there, we're going to be talking about this, and what would the rest of us do, or the rest of you do, I've had a little longer to think about this, so I have a little more exposure to that. It's, it's a possibility that we could put money into it, I, I hope you got an opportunity to look through the, the PACE, Assess Clean Energy Program, that's on the, that kind of covers what they do, or what their objectives are, their requirements, it's not, it doesn't cover, my understanding, it doesn't cover farms, but it does cover small businesses and stuff like that, or doesn't cover government agencies either. So this would be businesses or, that are on Main Street, that are on Aggie, you know, fertilizer plant, or whatever else, any of those kind of things. And most of what we've seen has been lighting. We did get a look, chance look at one last summer that was done in, I don't remember what town it was, but it was a gym that they had redone the lighting in, which, you know, made it nice, a nice thing, it's much more efficient, I understand that. I'm just, I'm a little hesitant, but how far do we, to helping private businesses grow, do we go? We have our, we have our own program with the partners here, that we help with funding on, for businesses in LeWell County. This is a little bit different, but it's going to be along the same lines. I guess, any questions? I mean, you guys, did I miss anything, or what are your opinions about it?
Mr. Chairman, a couple of things here, I noticed in a letter that Robin had sent out to, I'm not quite sure, it's sent to a lot of different people, but she notes in here that she is going to, you know, wants to go out and, and get on the agenda in the following county, she's going to be in Freeborn, Mower, and Renville, and she said in June, in her District Seven and Eight meeting in early June, while Simley County is coming up here in, what, June fourth, or whatever, I don't know the date, early June, and they are part of the Energy Board, so I'm wondering if maybe she shouldn't be notified to possibly.
I could, yeah, I could talk to her and see, talk to Jack and see if we can get her on the agenda, talk about it.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that she plans to be present at the AMC District Seven meeting in early June.
Well, she does.
I believe that's, that's how I.
Oh, then, District Seven, and then she's also going to these other counties, okay?
I think that's how.
Okay, okay, that would make sense. All right, so that's one point. The second is, you, in the past, had, this was quite a while ago, and it, it kind of tripped a light switch for me, talked about PACE and, and what they did, and they do some good, in the example you had given there, and I actually went out and talked to a couple of businesses about it after, they, in that particular instance, it was lighting at gas stations in these big overhead catapies, you know, and most of those are fluorescent lit units that are quite expensive to run versus an LED now, for example. And so in that example, what I had done some little research on, they do an energy audit, like you said, and then they would go and come back with, if you switch this over to LED, your amount of cost, monthly cost would be X dollars, okay, and you currently are paying, you know, Y dollars. Your savings is going to amount to this amount of money, and we'll take that savings and take it towards the loan, so your out-of-pocket cost here kind of stays level, but you're saving energy by doing this, and then after five years or whatever, that's going to be paid for, and that's going to be profitable to you then, plus it helped us save energy overall. So I think the basis of it is really a good, sound thing, I think that, you know, when I went out and tried to talk to a couple of people, they didn't have enough information, first of all, to, you know, they've got to, they've got to have some interest, well, the only way you're going to generate some interest is somebody who has, knows the program and can really, you know, go over. Now, what the venue of that would be, I don't know, you know, like you said, you know, how do you get a group together to?
Well, that's what I've struggled with, in the county board, is what.
You know, hot, hot topics in Ulm, for example, maybe would be a, you know, a chamber run thing that, you know, would have them, them come to, and then if, if we've got to fund it with levy dollars, I don't know either. Maybe when she gives us more information at the AMC meeting.
Yeah, this, this isn't the final decision, we're working on this, you see, the deadline is January, is the when they want to, and again, that's a deadline that is not board approved, but this has been, that's administrative approved deadlines, because this is more information than we have when we talked at the last meeting we had. They're, they're working on the process, and so what I'm looking for, what I'm looking from the rest of you is feelings about, how do you, how do I approach it when I go to the meeting, because I have to represent Brown County there, and I don't want to be the one to go and say, no, we won't do this, and, and we have three of us that says yes, and two that say, yeah, probably not, and the, the big, the part that, I agree with what you're saying on it, Scott, and all of it, the part that gets to me is when we start looking at six, seven, it isn't a ton of money, but it is, if everybody picks up six thousand dollars extra, you know, where do you draw the line? Pretty soon, I've been down the budget road several times, I don't like to, you know, you, you got three or four of them, you can pick up fifteen, eighteen thousand dollars, and pretty soon you're at two tenths of a percent, you have to raise your levy. That's, that's my concern, and I'm, that's the part I'm basing it on, pretty much, I, it doesn't help Brown County? Yes, I'm hoping you get a better picture of what, how this has helped Brown County. Maybe with, we speak, we listen to her speak, we'll have a better feel for what the rest of you feel too, I mean, I, go ahead, tell them.
Just a, Mr. Chairman, just the history on it, this was a fund that was running before, right?
Yes, this was, this was a, this was a dollar, or a grant that was given out to, I think it was through USDA.
Okay, and it didn't self-sustain itself then as a revolving fund at that time?
It, well, they've been going out and, and using the money, but what is happening is the, the program was not set up to promote it. We, we get money for doing a little administration, but we don't get money for going out and, and trying to sell it, and that's, they call it, I don't know what to do, they've used a word, but we don't, we're not getting out promoting, it's just not something that, I think it's like what Scott mentioned, people don't know anything about it, so when you talk to them a lot, they kind of go, what are you talking about? And it is, Slaton from New Ulm is, you know, about hour and a half away. It sounds like a long ways to go to, to get, and if Robin comes out to do something in New Ulm, well, she's got three hours of driving time down and back, plus the time here. Well, if there's, they, they did the, the grant, but they didn't allow money for promoting the program.
I think, I think there could be some real economic benefit to this program, and I think that they're right in that, that's exactly what they're short, is promotion, to get it out in front of people, to know that it's there, and how it operates, and how much it could actually save me.
We're, we're already doing the, the funding already in some way, you notice that our Rural Energy Board dues have jumped up again last year, and that was because we were taking funds out of Rural Energy Board and putting it into PACE, to use the, the promotion part of it, do the promotion part. Well, they've talked about it, and, and this is now at a point where we've got to make a decision, how are we going to continue the promotion, because the, the amount of promotion we're looking at is not funded by Energy Board dues, or we could just raise membership dues up, and this, this may continue on even if only twelve or thirteen counties do it. I, it depends on those that want to get involved. There are some of them are fairly anxious to continue it, some of those, you know, a lot of them are quite a little closer than what we do, but.
I think that would be important, too, is to be able to, that they would place, you know, evenly within the geographic coverage area there, so that they could get information out everywhere, instead of just being, you know, this is all coming out of Slaton, and right around Slaton, everything was great, well, we, that needs to get out to the other spots.
And once you get, and again, once you start, like, once you get started, you get somebody who does it and is successful.
Yeah.
It's easier to promote, or you get a couple. People, it kind of grows, and they work around that way. I mean, to me, it hasn't been, I haven't found a, a good way to fit, you going, trying to get all the electricians in the county together, I don't know when that happens. We talked about, with the partners meeting having her come, but I kind of looked at that, I'm not sure that somebody who's just given by, to buy a business, and then they going to tack another, right away, do something more like that, that, but that maybe banks might be another, but they, it doesn't directly impact the way they do things either, so.
My question would be is how, how that information gets delivered to Brown County, if it's, if she can meet individually with business owners, or, you know, groups or whatever, I mean, there's going to have to be that to make this work, and if we're going to contribute money to it, it's.
We got to get something for our money.
Yeah.
That's, that's the, that's the part I'm, and I'm, so far I have not seen, and maybe somebody else has got a place that we could...
Okay, so if we, we meet with her, and maybe if we meet with her at, at the AMC meetings here, we'll learn enough about it, then we can go forward, but if we don't, maybe we could have her initially come here.
We could, we could, I'm sure we could invite her to a board meeting, and that would be...
Get a little better...
She actually said, well, you know, if you, if you have me up for a board meeting, you can find a couple other places you can go and do it while you're in the, in the area, that would be, or other counties get together. Mileage and time is, uh, an issue for, that's what the cost involved is, is your, your, they, this has been going on for a few years, and it, it's just, to make it grow, they found out you have to go out and promote. Well, um, I've, I'm, then what I'm taking here away is that we're unsure what we would do. Um, we see, we see positive, but we have questions about the cost, and how we can, um, better, uh, get the, without a lot of going out, so, well, uh, I'll put a question mark when I, when I ask my, my question, when I'm decided at this point. Is that a fair statement, so far?
I think so.
Yeah. And I, I agree with that a lot, until I get more, more information from, from her at the, uh, some of the county meetings, or if she comes here, whatever.
I think...
I, I am in favor of the idea of this, and, and I, and what I've seen of it looks, it looks good. It really does, it, it looks like businesses could really benefit from, from doing this, especially if they needed to upgrade anything to start with.
Yeah. The other question I wanna make sure that we need to talk about here is where continued funding will come from, because if, if it's gonna get to be a continual, that dollars every year to keep the program running, that's, makes it look different as well. I mean, if we're working with a federal grant for making, you know, until those, the dollars have been slow to go out, but they're, they're still getting toward the, you know, end of that amount, and they don't come in very fast, when you take five or ten years to, to get a loan to revolve back.
Mr. Chairman, besides the annual appropriation that's being sought, um, if, if there are properties in Brown County, and it's property assessed, and all runs through administratively our auditor treasurer's office, there is time and effort internally that would have to be devoted to it.
Yep. Okay, well, appreciate you, the direction here on, uh, I will bring back more information as we, uh, as this develops.
Okay. Is there a motion to receive or file?
Second.
Motion second, please, if they would say aye.
Aye.
Of course. Motion passes. Okay, we'll take a diamond break, and reconvene. All right, we'll reconvene the meeting. Okay, you got, you're sixteen.
Good morning. Um, first item is the application filed by LNS Construction to renew an existing conditional use permit on the property, um, described in Section 29 of North Star Township. This is to continue to allow for a gravel mine operation to include extraction and processing, crushing, equipment all located in the A1A Protection Zoning District. Um, in the conditions, they were changed from the last time this, um, CUP was renewed, um, the, um, some of the ownership of the different gravel mines out there has changed. Shefflers have bought out the Geis pit, and the Sturm pit is no longer in operation as of now, so. We go back to the attachments. Attachment number one is the aerial photo showing the approximate location of the, um, pit. Um, this is in North Star Township, we have the Canadian Pacific Railroad to the south of this, uh, we have the Schwartz property to the northwest. We have the, uh, next attachment being the setback map, showing, um, various property owners. Uh, the Cottonwood River is a little farther out from this to the south. We have the, uh, next series of attachments being the, um, maps. The third attachment is the existing conditions, or Map A for the site. Um, Map Four is the, uh, Map B, which is the operation, you know, stockpile locations, et cetera. We have the next attachment, number five, being the end-use plan for the site. Um, most of it will be, um, in a pond, um, you know, so, uh, it'll be dug down, so the water will, uh, fill that up. Um, and attachment number six is a memo from LNS Construction describing the, um, proposed use of this pit, um, no explosives, um, dust control, noise around the plant, et cetera. Attachment seven and eight would be the checklist from the, um, Brown County inspection of the site, um, with the last attachment being nine, the, um, mailing list for the people that were fired. Um, we did have considerable discussion at the, the zoning, um, commission meeting, and, um, there are stuff, people out here who probably wanna see this, so.
Okay. I guess any questions for the commissioners? See none, if there's anybody from the public that would like to comment? Yes?
Rochelle Holverson, I live on 440th, which is the exit road for, um, all four pits, um, that are in that area. Um, speed has been a, a great concern, because the, the conditional use permit says thirty-five miles an hour, and there's no way to track that. One truck goes decent, one truck goes like a banshee, the next truck goes mediocre, the next truck goes real slow. Um, if the road is dry, because, um, because of the wet spring, we have not been able to get the chemical sprayed yet, so you can tell by the dust storm. Um, in the last week, since last Tuesday's meeting, they have been running at 6:30 in the morning. Um, I talked to my husband last night, and he said, I leave at 6:30 because I gotta be to work by seven, he said, and he did snap a picture of one of the trucks this morning going by our house at 6:30. Um, so, they're just not obeying, you know? And I don't know who, I mean, I can call Dennis, because he's my county commissioner. I mean, you can call the township, you can, but nobody can really do anything, except you guys.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, we did get a, um, response from the, um, from LNS, saying that they're gonna put up a sign that looks much like this at their, um, pit, to try to regulate the speed of the, um, truck drivers. Uh, I know they have a hard time controlling drivers that aren't, um, hired by them specifically, you know, independent truckers. Um, the, it's hard, you know? Uh, our office will get a call from Rochelle, and we'll go out there, and we'll, and we have sat for, um, hours on hand, and if there is a truck that goes by, it's always following the speeds of it. So, it seems like whenever we go out there to, um, try to, I don't know, catch someone or see if anybody is driving fast, it hasn't, it hasn't been apparent to us, so, um, you know, we can time the trucks as they go between the two, um, power poles, which would be about 300 feet, and we can figure out approximately how fast they're going. But, um, we, we haven't seen anybody exceeding the speed limit.
Lain, have you been out in the last week?
Uh, have not been out in the last week.
I just wanted to know if you saw how the road was. It's bad?
Um, I have not been out in the last week, so...
This thirty mile, mile an hour stretch, is this the entire distance until they get to a tar road, or what's...
Two fourteen. It's between the, the pit and the, um, and Highway fourteen.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, let's just let, if, have, do you know if they've ever, like, worked with the sheriff on that as far as, 'cause the, the, the reason I bring that up is, we have like a, we use this a lot in town, you, it's like a, a sign that says, you know, thirty miles an hour. It record, it, it says on there to alert people that they're driving whatever their speed is, and then it actually records it. So, there's actually data, so they can figure out between certain times. You know, I don't know if that's a, a permanent solution, because we kinda revolve this around, and, I mean, there'd be no cost for them to use that, but it, it revolves around, like, right now I believe Sleepy Eye has it, Springfield might take their turn, we use it a lot up by the school, especially, the thing's constantly being used, because, you know, that, what we like about it is that we're recording that data.
Uh, I, I do know that the Sheriff's Office, to my knowledge, does not have one of those for its own specific use, but, um, they would be able to use it, I'm sure, you know, they would, so...
It was actually covered under a, a grant, so, like, we got the, the funding through, like, through a collaborative effort, like, with USAC. So, it's, it's, it's available to any agency in the county, any law enforcement agency. I mean, that, that data might be valuable, that's, that's what we see, it's like, you know, we kinda even see, like, at the times, like, oh, well, there's, there's a spike at 7:30, or especially like with school enforcement, 'cause we, we have problems with that in town, because, you know, and then there are certain roads that you can't be everywhere. You hear, you hear concerns, you're out there trying to patrol and trying to verify that, and then, uh, like I said, you're, you're just missing it, or they see your squad car and they, you know, then, then there are no issues. My, my day job is in law enforcement, work for the city of New Ulm.
The machine was actually received through a ship grant, um...
That's right.
It was, it was meant to be shared within the county, and so, it would be a good use for it.
Um, Ron Grammer, North Star Township, Township Supervisor. We farm all around this, and when these gravel trucks turn that corner, there's no way in heck that they can get up to thirty-five miles an hour past our place, not fully loaded. Um, we had, we worked with the Brown County Sheriff, he's been out there, the most he's ever clocked one at was twenty-eight. And he came to my place one day, and he wanted to know how long he should sit there. What do you tell him? You know, obviously, I mean, it's just like everybody else, when they see a patrol car there, they're gonna drive to speed limit. Once he's gone, well, it is, but it's too short of a distance to get a fully loaded gravel truck up to any speed, especially this spring. I mean, we, the road past their place, we're working on, it is, there's two very bad frost boils in there that we're working on. But there's no way in heck they can get up to be, to speed, so I, to me, speed is not an issue. I mean, the road condition right now, it doesn't, um, there's one frost boil to the south of our place, and there's one to the north, and the one to the north is a, a very bad one. And I've worked with, I've just, I got off the phone with LNS before I got here, and they're gonna attempt to be fixing it here this afternoon. Um, I didn't hear about it until yesterday af, late yesterday afternoon, and, uh, if I don't know, I can't fix it.
Well, I think that if the, uh, you know, if speed, you know, you're saying the speed isn't an issue, and she's saying it is, so, this is a good way to prove that it is or is not.
Right.
Set, set the machine out there and...
Yeah, if you want, the machine's sitting out there, I have no problem with it sitting there, but I just don't think that...
Well, there's ways to figure that out, and hopefully, you know, we wanna make sure the conditions are met.
Right.
If we're gonna impose them, and, and, um, there's ways to figure this out.
You know, our, our biggest problem with this whole pit thing is, is when all these independent guys come in, and LNS hasn't told them where the, the haul roads are. And once in a while, we do get some guys, but once Ray gets a hold of them, the guy that kind of is the manager for this, it's straightened out. And I think at the last one, Ray had said too, he said, he does not know who's gonna come to that pit until they show up. So, it, it's kind of hard to, you know, get something out there unless these people do it in advance, and a lot of people don't do that.
Well, but there's still a way to communicate that information, so...
Right, there is a way to communicate it, but I...
That's, that's really up to the person getting this...
But until these gravel trucks show up in the pit...
Yeah.
You know, then they're told how to go do it, but that's our biggest headache.
So, maybe getting there, they might not follow it up.
Right, they're getting there, they might not follow the, the correct thing.
Ronnie, do we have that many new ones coming in there that, that's a problem like that?
Every so often we get some.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, uh...
But the ones who, who haul out it here, out of there regularly haul out of there.
Right, yes.
I live close enough to know that.
Yeah.
And so, that, that reason doesn't legitify me as much as what you're trying to make it come to, because, you know, there, there's, I guess I sit back and look at, we've run conditional use permits for gravel, and we have new pits that a lot of control is.
Right.
And so, it can be done, and this one doesn't. And I, that's a concern to me. I had, when we had this meeting, uh, a week ago, I sat over there, and that's what I started off, explaining to, to Ray that this is their problem, they are the ones that need to control it.
Yeah.
Now, and now if we're running, we haven't even gone a week, and we're doing a 6:30 startup?
Yeah.
Right.
Does that give me a reason to vote to, to ratify it today? I was going to, but this, this is the wrong way to step on my toes right away.
What I'm guessing is, is, I, what I'm wondering is, I don't know if they're full or if they're going in empty.
They're, they're coming out full, and my husband, who is technologically disadvantaged, actually took the picture this morning, and laid it on my little mat by my coffee pot, and said, "Good morning," and put that picture there. So, and he said it's been going on all week, and I'm like, really? It hasn't even been a week yet, and it's all independence.
Yeah, she don't even have a permit yet.
No. So, it's like...
I'm not, I'm not after you running, this is just something...
No, I don't, this isn't...
You and I have had this conversation, I've talked to most everybody who lives around there about this, it's an issue.
I mean, this is the third permit, third or fourth permit, and it's always the same problem. Um, the township complaining that they aren't using the correct roads, I'm complaining about speed and safety, and, and nobody can really enforce anything. You know, nothing ever changes. Speed has been an issue every time I come here. Safety's been an issue. Wrong roads have been an issue.
Commissioner, what's your...
Mr. Chair, I'm just looking at the recommendations of the conditional use permit, and, you know, the recommendation says, approve with recommended conditions below. The owner is responsible for following all conditions placed on the other gravel operations located in North Star Township, and the speed limit of no more than thirty-five miles an hour for all gravel trucks, and the gravel hauling from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. So, there are numerous things here that are not being taken care of properly. I don't know what our, uh, you know, the, the speed thing, I think we could get under control with that verification, whether it actually is speeding or it's not speeding. The pit opening before seven o'clock is not, should not be happening. And they're doing it before they're even getting the permit already, renewed.
And they did it last summer, too, but...
But I don't know, I mean, you're, you're, I've only got one person telling me this too, so I just have to...
Eventually, you just get tired of calling poor lane, I mean, and complaining, you just...
But I, I guess my question is, you know, they do this once, you know, and if we have proof of that, I mean, how often, if this happens, I mean, this conditional use can be pulled if they disobey these conditions, correct?
Correct.
So, I guess we need to make it clear as far as... So I guess we need to make it clear as far as if this were a livestock operation, it'd be shut down, you know, so I.
Well, if they're not, um, following the conditions that are in their conditional use permit, um, and they refuse to do that, well then, yeah, we have a right to, to call.
Do we have the right to suspend this permit until we meet with somebody from LNS that can come in here and, and have a discussion with us?
We could table it for two weeks.
But we, I, that last Tuesday morning, I sat there and that's what I started off with is explaining to them that they are responsible for making these things happen. And I, that's specifically why I did it is because in the past I'm not sure that they understood. That's why I went through the process of going over that. And it's, it's to me frustrating because I'm, we don't even get the permit done and we've already got complaints about what's going on. That somewhat indicates that it's gonna be a long summer. I get to live close to there and that's not a pleasant thing.
That's the one that was taken this morning.
Well.
There's just two copies of the signature.
Question, Lane, if we, is their permit passed due or is it, is it, how, what is the?
I would have to check their file.
I mean, if, if we didn't renew it, if we tabled to the day, would that shut them down?
No, cause they're, I think they're still operating under their old permit.
Well, that's the question I'm going is, where do we have, are we gonna have to put teeth into it to make it happen? I, cause I, I, up until this point, I've, well, okay, they're getting a little better each year and they, they have been getting a little better. But now we went through the cycle I've watched again on the gravel pits that we've been permitting and we don't have these problems. And so they need to get it under control. I mean, they, they are in charge of the pit and that's. One of the things that I see change here now when I ask, I didn't ask this question last week was, now this time, both pits are being, the permit is to LNS, right? And before that, it was, one of them was to, it was the owners. One was LNS, one was Grebner's. So now this time, do we pull the permit from LNS because they, their name is on the permit or do we still go back and? Um, I mean, it's, it's a change I noticed and I didn't.
We would, we don't have any way to differentiate as to which pit this truck is coming out of.
Yep.
Um, I think we would tell Sheffler or, excuse me, tell Ray, since he's the operator, he's the one in charge of both pits, that, um, you can't run your trucks early. I mean, it's just, your permit states seven o'clock. It always has stated seven o'clock. If you're going earlier.
And my, my understanding of the permit, that means not out of the pit before seven, back in the pit and parked by seven. Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah. Unless they would try to come up with a different, you know, time schedule. We have done that in the past with, um, but pits with hot mix plants because they, you know, wanna get the job done as soon as they can so they can get out of there.
That's a different scenario with hot mix.
Yeah.
Very like said, it's a tightened, this is gotta, what we gotta do to get done here, gravel is there. So the gravel is gone.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair. Yes. And Mr. Slade, as far as enforcement, is, what kind of teeth do we have for enforcement? So, I mean, if, if we were to support this, I mean, I don't wanna, cause I mean, I assume the same, the same concerns. We're already having some, some allegations, some concerns about violations, but I mean, is it one of those things? Cause I mean, I've worked in enforcement my entire life and with certain things, it's just like you, you have to give like, you know, fifty-five warnings and it keeps reoccurring. I mean, what, what, what is the teeth on that? What's your experience just as far as educating me?
I would, um, obviously have to run out there and, you know, observe the truck running before seven o'clock. And, um, I would first of all, write them a letter, call them first, write them a letter, tell them this letter's coming, lay it all out. Get more complaints, then I talk to the county attorney. He would write a, a letter and then it continues. Then we take action.
So essentially on the third same or similar type of violation.
I was hoping this was going better.
Well, it is getting better, but I said, it's just, it's just the, the.
No.
It is better than what it was your very first year. I mean.
For us, it's, it's just the, the stray trucks that show up.
Yeah.
The locals are, are fine. I said, they're, they're following everything. But it's the people that just show up out there that gets everything screwy. And I don't know how you'd ever, you know, because some of these firms, they wanna pull their gravel, so they'll just send a truck down to the pit, won't call anybody. A number of the ones that.
And you don't, but, but the way for that, LNS has got to control that situation.
I know they have to control it.
If they have that happening, they've gotta say to that guy coming out there with no advance, whatever, we're, we're not gonna log you.
Right.
We, we can't let you haul.
Yeah.
You know, you're, you're driving too fast, you're whatever. They're responsible to control.
Right.
Everything coming out of that pit, so.
It's just, uh, you know, that's been the problem, I think, since we started, you know, is, is the strays that come out.
But some of those must be repeats from year to year, so.
Some are.
You know, he, he knows who those people are and yeah, he's gonna get a random one here and there that he doesn't know about.
Most of the time, well, they're typical like everything else, a lot of them are new drivers.
Yeah.
You know, that's the problem.
Maybe I'm just naive about how gravel pits work, but these drivers aren't coming out there and loading their own trucks.
No.
So if somebody, the permit loader is out there.
Right.
Loading.
LNS has a payloader sitting here that's theirs.
So if they're loading a truck before seven AM.
Right.
It, you can't blame that on a new driver.
No, no, not. No, no, that I'm not. It's the drivers that just show up in the pit.
Sure.
Wanting gravel.
Right. But again, the, the four hours.
Right, the four hours, that's, yeah, that falls back on LNS.
Mr. Chair, returning answer, could, would it be appropriate for us to table this, uh, at this point? And to do the notification that Wayne has talked about? And to put a speed monitoring device out there for a period of time and bring it back at that point.
Well, I think the concern with that is the overlap of when that old permit expires and when this renewal would take effect. I mean, if, if the old permit expires tomorrow, well then he's without a permit.
So when does the old permit expire?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
I guess that would be my, I think, I guess my advice would be if you're, if you're going to approve it, um, approve it. And then also it leaves a problem with the old permit, um, then you're on the, you're on the new permit at that point. And so then if you've got these old owners, they're off, it's consolidated, so then you're on the new permit anyway. You can always pull the permit at any point. Like Lane said, there's a procedure. He would issue a warning. Typically it comes to, we do the same with ditch violations, things like that with Wayne Stevens. He will write a letter saying you're in violation of the ordinance, you're, you're in violation of your conditional, your permit, correct this problem. If it doesn't, this will be referred to the county attorney and I would write a letter saying you're in violation and the board will be pulling your permit.
What conditions are different, I guess, on this one versus the other?
They're pretty much the same.
It's the same.
Just the name, I think.
But Mr. Chairman, at the planning and zoning commission, there was some consolidation of the properties into only two landowners now.
Correct. The, the Sturm pit is not being dug out of their mine right now. So that one is, has been led, led to expire. Um, the Shefflers also bought the, the Geis property, so those two, um, properties are now included in this permit.
From that perspective, if the board favors approval of this, it would be an easier audit trail to the new permit owner and holder for enforcement.
I guess I would be in favor of moving this forward with just making sure that Lane makes contact with these owners and make sure they understand what the ramifications are of not following these conditions, so.
Mr. Chair. I, I've also, you know, as far as the enforcement, I, you know, I'd like some, some teeth in that. You know, cause I mean, I, I think, I've been in that situation where, you know, it's over, over, you know, not with this direct situation, obviously. But I mean, that's, that's frustrating for people living around there and, you know, and we can, we can say, and I, and I certainly believe you, sir, that, you know, it's, it's people that are outside your control, but again, the control, someone has to be accountable for that. And I mean, I, I wouldn't want this words, you know, going on and on and on. It's like, okay, back at it again. Cause I don't think that's fair.
Did we, did we have a motion for?
Don't please.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna move the table for two weeks and let Lane have a conversation with the sheriff and people. And I know what the feeling of the board is and why it's being tabled.
Mr. Chairman, just to the point, um, we do not meet in two weeks. We meet next Tuesday and then it would be three weeks, June fifth. Because we have that extra Tuesday. So I'm not sure if you would choose May twenty-second or June fifth, two, one week or three weeks.
Can you get that much done in a week, Lane? Can you talk to them and? Or is that?
I need to run out to Mount Creek. I will drive a few extra miles to their site.
It's not much, yes, it's not much out of your way going there.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll move the table one week.
I would second that. Any other discussion?
And make sure, please make sure that they understand why the, but good amount of conversation here today and the concerns about what was happening.
Mr. Chairman, perhaps we should state a specific time for the twenty-second. That's human services, so eleven-thirty, if that works.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the next application is filed by LNS Construction. This is on property owned by Joseph Grebner and Sherry Grebner are the landowners. Uh, this is in section twenty-nine of North Star Township. This is the, um, pit basically that's directly to the southeast of the, um, previous application. Um, it has the same conditions as the previous conditions. To go back to the, um, the, the Grebner set of attachments. We have the aerial photo showing the approximate location of the, um, pit. The, um, setback map showing the surrounding property owners, Flatwood River to the south. Again, um, we have map A, B, and C. Map A being the existing conditions. Map, excuse me, B would be the, um, proposed mining areas and stockpile information. With map C, the next, um, attachment being the end use plan. We have the, um, memo detailing what the operation is going to be for this pit. We have the checklist, meaning section, their attachments, uh, seven and eight, and the mailing list, which is number nine. I assume that we should probably proceed in a, the same fashion as the previous ones, since it was operated by the same firm.
I guess if there's, well, someone else has got to have a move to, to, to tape this a little while.
I'll second it. Same conditions?
Motion second, any other discussion? See none, those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, item three.
Okay, item three is a conditional use permit by Chris Shady on property in, um, section eight of Stark Township. This is to renew an existing conditional use permit and to continue allow up to six hundred annually units, which would be two thousand head at a maximum capacity in a hog wean to finish operation, all located in the A1A protection zoning district. We look at the attachments. This is an existing site. This is on, um, Highway four, south of Sleepy Eye. The Sleepy Eye sewage ponds are directly to the east of this. Um, Highway four is to the west. We have the setback map showing half mile, three quarter mile concentric rings, um, property over enlisted. Attachments three and four is the summary that was filled out by Robert Santatella after his inspection. Uh, and we have the mailing list that was used to notify certain property owners. There was nobody at the, um, zoning commission to voice any concern about this, uh, application. Has been before the board, I think, two or three times, so. This was known as the Del X side.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion second, any other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Did you say, did you have any, any neighbors, anybody?
No, I'm concerned, no concern, no concern.
Any other discussion? See none, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, item four.
Item four is an application filled out, filed by Scott Vogel on property owned by Timothy and Jill Vogel in section eight of Birdstown Township. Excuse me, the, uh, this is to allow up to a maximum of seven hundred forty-eight point five annually units, which is two thousand four hundred ninety-five head in a total new, um, confined, confinement hog finishing operation located within the A1A protection zoning district. Uh, we go back to the Vogels' set of attachments. We have the site plan. Um, there is a ditch to the southwest approximately three hundred and thirty-four feet. We have, uh, a setback to the township road of, uh, three hundred and thirty-five, eighty feet to the east property line. Attachment two is the, um, map showing the concentric rings of half mile and three quarter mile. Um, this is a, um, location that is, um, relatively isolated here, so. We have the, um, the checklist summary, which is attachments three and four and, um, the mailing notification list, which is number five. We have, Mr. Vogel. We have Mr. Vogel here too. Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Did we have anybody voicing concerns?
Nobody voiced their concerns.
This is a good location. I'm very familiar with this. Scott lives east of the proposed site and his parents live just west of it. They're two closest residents to the buildings I wish I could consider. I love to have them as the closest neighbors and I know it's due diligence to find a spot that was good for the neighbors and worked well for him as well, so I think they've got a very good location here. The, if you look on the map, Kurt Kratz's site has hogs on it, but no one lives there. Actually, the Kratzes live to the northwest about a little ways.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have motion second. Any other discussion? See none, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes.
Item five is a kind of flat application by Patrick Vogel. This is in Section 33 of Birdstown Township, and parcel being platted as an existing woodlot being split off from the building. We have the attachments, being the aerial photo. This is a nice square parcel that is being proposed. It's south of the Patwood River. We have the schematic diagram of blown up burden, being Vogel number two, followed by the copy of the document. This is a nice, excuse me, square parcel.
This site was a building site at one time. The buildings are gone now, but this site had part of the building site on the side. The house was there, was on the center of that location, and then there was a barn and there's a remnant of, I think, a grain bed on the other side of the road that were part of it. So it's a nice, it's a nice, it's top of the hill also, which makes it a good spot to have a driveway out to the county road. I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion second. Any other discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Mr. Henderson, we got number seventeen.
Mr. Chairman, question on claim here. Electronically on page 123, it's towards the end of the claims. I guess there were two burial services that stood to the home, the exact same dollar amount. Is that, was that...
Following the rates that we have and taking the maxes.
Okay.
Where it was appropriate.
Okay.
More than anything, but we do have our rates, so if they just add the top, then it's gonna make two of them the same.
Move it. Second. Motion second. Any other discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, number eighteen, we have closed session for social services payments.
You know, speaker types, so once that whole thing is done, we're, it shouldn't be more than a forty-five minute, hour after that.
That certainly is not a problem with the current scheduling, but even if you need more time, we can do a split shift for your appointments.
Yeah, and then put me coming back.
If necessary.
That's fine. Okay, we'll leave it for thirty minutes then.
Um, I ask you, did Lisa Schmitz contact you for daycare issues?
I went out for a place and spent an hour with her. And so next week, we all have, you know, something the county could do, is consider lowering what the county charges for people, and that's on the agenda. And then I've got summary, two page summary of all her thoughts attached to that particular, so that'll, that one'll take a while. It's a big subject, tough subject.
Very good. I just wanted to make sure that you...
She, yes, I called her yesterday about the news releases, kept saying, "County has nothing to do with this. We don't have any centers of that type in the county." She just went on and on and on. Finally, she said, "Oh, I'm sorry, Tom. I realize you were the only thing to say about this." Thank you for realizing that. But I listened to her.
So she's been heard. All right, we can tell them. All right, number nineteen.
Mr. Chairman, Chilling Cook, the president of the Library Board, contact Comfrey. We have an appointment for the board to consider driving Pamstorf, who's on the Comfrey Library Board, will represent Comfrey through 20th. So does that have a full...
Move it.
Second.
Motion second. Any other discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Rep is not hearing that. There is a guy out there.
He probably is. We do need to break at eleven o'clock to convene the hearing briefly.
I think there's a lion fook. We probably don't have enough time for my, right, ten minutes. Should just do a couple committee reports until eleven. Mr. Chair. Nice, Sutres Committee meeting. I attended on May eighth. I'll defer that and maybe do a joint one with you. And Brown County Evaluation Center attended that on, it would've been yesterday, on May fourteenth, and that was at 3:30 PM. Just the interest of time, I'll summarize by saying that our usage, our days of service are up slightly, so that's, that's good news from a budgeting standpoint. One thing that's getting a little bit tougher that we're encountering is getting reimbursed by insurance, and that's kind of across the, across the board. It's just tougher for us to get payments, and it does affect our bottom line. It's certainly a challenge that our staff is diligently working on and working through, but I think it's a little bit of just the nature of the business. It's difficult. The good news, though, is, you know, we're, as far as our quarterly report, we're running in the black, hiring some, some new staff. You know, it's a little bit of a vicious cycle. We just have a little bit of turnover. And that's, you know, part of that's just from the labor shortage that we're encountering. We had some discussion about possibly going with, you know, more full-time positions versus part-time, because it costs a little bit more, but the retention, and, you know, when you're figuring all the training court costs that's involved with turnover, you know, that's, you're talking about real money. So we had some discussion on that. We didn't take any action other than we're gonna talk about that again probably next month. That would conclude my report unless there's questions.
Had a salary administration meeting after the last board meeting, and pretty much everything we went over was covered in the RBA that we had before us today, so let that one go. Last Friday, had a Gubberba meeting, went over the budget. Most money now is spent on cover crops. That's what people seem to be the most interested in, and they're really pushing that. But they're also still pushing the side inlets, alternative intakes, and grade stabilization. Couple of the SWCDs are thinking of hiring soil loss ordinance directors, and that's to comply with the second part of the buffer bill, which nobody really talks about yet, soil erosion. I brought that up a little while back. That was also another thing that'll be reported. They'll go to the SWCD. They run it through a calculator to determine the severity of it. If it reaches a certain point, they start contacting the landowner, and then there's penalties, et cetera, involved with that too, so that will be popular, I'm sure.
Is that within the sixteen foot limit then? I mean, is that...
It's anywhere, feels.
Anywhere, if you have a problem.
Yeah, feels, but anywhere on your land.
In the watershed, I assume.
Yeah. But, yeah, really anywhere, statewide, so it came with the buffer bill. And one item on the one watershed, one plan for the lot, one watershed. They're waiting for one signature yet out of Bluerth, and we ran into the board a little while back, and then we get the ball rolling, and we'll go with consultants and... The last meeting is employee recognition, the follow-up meeting, and pretty much, I don't know, did you guys all get one of these on your desk this morning? They were real pleased, all the reports we get with the banquet we had, they were real pleased with the meal and what it was, et cetera. So they're probably recommending something similar for next year. And that would conclude my report.
I did what Dad, I think it was already this banquet, and he did a great job of getting mine up, so.
Yeah, and it's, a lot of other people, not me.
You're appointed again next year.
Okay, you had, you're done? Okay. Historical Society, finance meeting, and then the regular meeting. The finance meeting, we talked about setting up a, what did we call it here? Allocation of investment portfolio, and then just, this is typical in a lot of financial, trying to make sure your bases are covered with your investments, and set up so much in equity and securities, so much international securities, so much in fixed income, so much in cash, and put a guideline there. There was never really one in place before that, but now they'll, they've already been doing this balancing of the funds and the accounts in the past, but now they've got a guideline to stay within those perimeters. So the friends and men is the, one of the, holding the financial interests therein. They have, within the financial agreements of the Historical Society, the right to make those changes as needed, and now they have in writing a guide to follow, so that was that. Investment historical review here was up through March, which was not good, but of course, then April and May had been much better. Overall, they have improved over the last year, so that was good to see. From that standpoint. They had some comments on the Nieman. This was this past weekend, and the activities involved with Mr. Nieman the pilot. Really good comments, really good gatherings. They had ninety-nine people attend the little session that they had at the Historical Society there, so. Was, turnout was really great. The family was very, very thankful and appreciative, and they all saw that it went really well. Last night on American Pickers, Historic History Channel, there was one of our local residents featured, and he, I was at this meeting, and I missed the first half of that, but my wife said, "Well, he was talking about the Brown County Historical Society," so they should've been watching it there. We're looking at the door. We got a little issue with the door, those garage doors that we accidentally, they were not in good shape to start with, and they accidentally were damaged in stolen rule, and the popper wagon is behind one of those doors, and it's gotta be out by June 4th, so we're actively trying to figure out a way to get that door fixed or repaired enough to get it open, and we're gonna talk with Jesse and see if he can take a look at it. Administrator in, or we'll see what he can, if he can look at that. Otherwise, we may, otherwise they were threatening for me to be out with some kind of a big tall hat, red and white striped, all filled with a sign on the street, like popper wagon this way or something, and they'd have to come into the building to get it. I said, "We'll find somebody to fix the door." Okay, STHA, they had a pretty good meeting there. This is back on May 3rd. First three months of the year, as you remember, when Scott Choughman, the CFO, was here, it was looking good in January, February. March definitely turned the other direction, showed a net loss of 980,000, but our, to a budgeted net loss, we figured 778,000. Overall, claims were favorable by 135,000 to date, so that was good. What really tipped the scales on this particular issue was pharmacy claims. And the new drugs are very expensive, and we had two drug uses that were $125,000 a dose, and so there were four doses that had to be prescribed, so that was $500,000 right there. So that really tipped the scales the other direction. There will be the possibility of more use of that particular drug throughout the rest of this year. However, our reinsurance kicks in at 450,000, so we're figuring that we've kind of hit our loss there on that one, and so it shouldn't be worse there. Loss ratio at 93.1, which was down just a hair, so they're getting that coming in the right direction. At this point, we always have a discussion on getting our bills, having our bills being paid. The state of Minnesota delays our payment for about four weeks just to stretch out to make their money go further, so they just stopped making their payment to us in, the one that would come in, in June, for about four weeks, so we don't get that till like the end of July. And this is a huge issue. There's no reason why we should be being a bank for the state, but that's what it amounts to. And it's about $30 million that they delay, so it's a large sum of money. It's not just being it's. And so we always start looking at that and try to determine, do we have enough cash balance flow on hand to make those payments, or we have alternative things that we do in times when the cash flow is short, and providers have been very receptive to say, "Okay, well, we know what's coming," and, you know, it's not the weather it's coming, it's definitely there, it just is being delayed by the state, so. So they've always been good about that, so we're not, I'm not concerned in that manner, but that is always a thing that comes up this time of the year. Southern Prairie Community Care is a unit of twelve counties in the southwest part of the state, Chippewa, Cottonwood, Jackson, Candy Y, Lincoln Lion, Murray, Nobles, Redwood, Rock, Swift, and Yellow Medicine. And they are a unit that... And they are a unit that is trying to reduce costs and provide benefits. And they're at the point now where they need to, in the state, DHS has funded them. But they've lost some of their membership, they were at $28,000 or down to $25,000. They need to build in the healthcare portion of what they're doing that we are doing here at SCAJ through Brown County. And so, they are looking to possibly want to merge with South Country, or merge with Prime West, or start their own county base purchasing. And get this, DHS actually supports this. So, can't figure that one out. But they, they are, they're being supportive of it and saying, "Yep, that's what you guys should be doing." So, we are trying to determine whether or not do we want to take these people on, can couldn't we even do it? It's 12 counties, that's one more than we already got now. So, it'd be doubling in size, number of counties wise, it wouldn't double necessarily the population that would be involved with it. So, we're doing some pretty serious planning and discussion, and the executive committee will be meeting to determine what direction might be the thing to do there. Currently, they're operate, they've operated under money received from Blue Cross and from the state of Minnesota. That's how they, they've been funded up to now.
Are they doing similar to what South Country's doing now?
Well, they're doing, they're doing some of the, some of the work as far as maybe programs or that type of thing, but they're not doing any health, they don't, there's no health component built into it. And so, for, you know, medical assistance or Minnesota care, or, you know, any of these type things, they're not involved in that. But they are trying to do some of the programs to re, to contain cost and to reduce expenses and those kinds of issues of that. So, they're, they're on the edge there, but they need to move, take the next step is what, what's going to happen. And I think that it, it would be a real possibility that they may really want to come with us, but we've got to, we've got to look and see, you know, how will it affect our RBC and, you know, how much more would we, you know, some things, you know, we would be able to handle without any additional input at all, but other things would require more personnel and all those kind of issues too. So, it's, it's going to be a process too. They were, they were kind of hoping to do it by 19, and we're saying, oh no, 2020 would be the earliest that we could make any kind of a commitment to.
You've got a little bit of history in doing this in the past, because what was it, about five years ago, six years ago? We added the other counties and so-
Yeah, it's been-
You have some history to go back and look at what kind of issues happened when those were added, better than they were at that time we made that decision.
Yeah. So, that's being looked into, and of course, I'll keep you updated on that as we go along here.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
To that point, if we did add counties to the Joe Powers Board, would that be part of the, what would some of the individual county boards of the members kind of?
I would imagine it would. Mm-hmm. And of course, there'd be a buy-in, they'd have to come up with capital to, to come in. And we were talking about, well, how would that be determined? And so, there is a lot of stuff on the table right now that we're, we're looking at, so.
I imagine there'd be some advantages, or at least some options with economies of scale.
Yes.
On the other side, doubling, that's, that's a big endeavor.
Right. Right. And that's exactly the thoughts we have up to this point, so. Member Services Operations, remember we had a kind of a snafu there that we had some problems? We did receive a second notice from CMS, a non-compliance to the call center, but that was in early January. Average hold time was 2.13 minutes, which is above our metric, average hold time of two minutes is what we, what we need. And, but by February's, the call center average hold time was 68 seconds, by March it was 22.4 seconds. So, the corrective action plans were implemented and doing their job, and that should be the end of that issue problem. They are, they have done some integrity program report, they're looking at transportation and ACC Midwest is a provider that does transportation for a lot of MA folks in a lot of counties. Started doing some auditing on the books there, and are currently, have recovered $10,000 in fees that were paid out that were not properly documented, and we have, we had the money returned. So, we're always looking anywhere we can to eliminate drug waste abuse. Five is here, so five was the, we're still looking at facilities updating. We're going to sign the one-year lease currently, but they're looking at, still looking at facilities in Owatonna and the surrounding area, trying to determine. And now, of course, the other issue was with this possibility of taking these 12 counties, size there is a big issue as well. And number six, okay, so that was Leota and a bunch left and went to Washington DC and talked with Senator Klobuchar, Tina Smith, our new senator for Minnesota, State Health, Education, Labor, and Pension Committee, Coast Energy, Commerce Committee, Congressman Tim Walz, Congressman Rick Nolan, Colin Peterson, Jason Lewis. And this was quite interesting here. You know, Walz is, is running for governor, so he will be leaving the Legislative House there. He was going to initially sponsor legislation to solidify county purchase, purchase of health plans. But because he's leaving and this legislation takes time to get enacted, they're talking with Congressman Colin Peterson, who has stepped up to say he will do it, he's Democrat in Minnesota. And Jason Lewis said that he would file his second on that legislation, and that's, he's Republican from Minnesota. So, but we recently learned that the Minnesota Department of Health will not meet with us in regards to this legislation. And we were able to quickly and efficiently develop alternate legislative plans from our draft legislative, legislation. So, we tried to meet with Department of Health, and they wouldn't do it, so.
I wonder why.
Then when they met with Tim Walz at the start of the meeting, the, one of the personnel there were told that DHS shared with Congressman Walz's office that they're opposed to our bill, and that this legislation we're working to advance is a dire attempt by South Country Health to secure itself in the market due to financial problems. And DHS indicated that the reason South Country Health didn't get procurement originally in 2015 was a result of bad financials and trouble with delivering services. And so, we immediately asked them to prove to us what they're talking about. Where our RBC has never been below 200 percent, we never made, had any claims not been paid, there's been no issues with service. Where are you coming up with this? And so, at that point, they kind of clammed up and said that they really didn't want to be with us again. And so, then they finally, when they talked with these other senators and representatives, they've kind of had said, "Well, we will contact DHS and talk with them." And so, when they went to Amy Klobuchar's office, they were able to meet with Senator Klobuchar and discuss the issues that we're currently up against, including securing a meeting with DHS. And Senator Klobuchar said she would call DHS on our behalf and work to have them meet with us. So, hopefully, they can sit down at a table and become adults and talk over whatever their concerns and questions are. So, that was quite lengthy, but I think it was all information that needed to be shared here, so.
God, you made a comment here, and it's one of the things I see is, some of the mess we have dealing with state and federal legislatures, is that when a state's, when a national senator can't make someone that works for them do something, and request, who's really running things? We run into this regularly with the state. I mean, I, I talked to legislators at the state level, and they act like they aren't in control. It was done without their knowledge or permission, and that's making me really nervous about where we're headed, because I don't, I think we're-
I'm thinking when they did talk with these people now, and when they're contacting them, I think that meeting will inspire. But why do you even have to get to that point in the first place?
I agree.
And I think there's something wrong. Yeah.
I agree with Mr. Potter, you know, just with my observations, you know, especially when you're talking about some of the big state agencies, and it just seems like the legislators and senators, they're like, "Well, that's out of my control," with the DNR. It's like, well, who's running this? And that's where I believe it's, it's really important that we have strong elections and we have, they, I think that that's, that's our ability to have some influence as far as population.
Okay, is that, is that going to go again? Okay, we'll move on to, would be the petition, I'll let into CD 63.
We convene a public hearing now.
We can convene a public hearing, so I don't know if there's anybody else side, but-
No.
Okay.
No, there was an issue with the original mailing that we did and the publication, we had the wrong township number listed, and a landowner pointed that out. And because of that, to make it all about board, we remailed, we reset a public hearing. Hopefully, it works out that we can do that, May 22nd at 11:00 AM. So, basically, what we did is we convened this one to have it continue to next week, so that we have done the appropriate remailing and repulsing the right township number. So, I apologize for the error, but things happen, I guess.
So, we really don't need any discussion, just a motion to continue the meeting to next Tuesday?
That would be my understanding.
So, vote. Okay, motion second, to continue this hearing at 11:00 AM on Tuesday, 5:22. Okay, any other discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Forced.
Thank you.
You heard that, didn't you?
Jane, could you grab Lane and shake him up?
Maybe you better not say grab.
Wait to do that, thank you. Did you win, Andrew? Did you win?
I think they're just going to hear about the PowerPoint. I think they're just going to hear about the PowerPoint, because we're going to drag down the screen and stuff.
Go ahead, Lane.
All right, number 21. Want to note that we submitted our free permitting application to the Minnesota School and Control Agency in April of 2017. The agency took until May 9th of 2018 to actually issue the permit, of which I have, I can make copies if you would like to look at. The previous permit was applied for in 2007 and never acted upon by the agency. In 2011 or so, I received a letter stating that we were allowed to operate under the 1999 permit, and that's what we've been operating on ever since. Last year, the Department of Health lowered the levels of many constituents found in groundwater to remain healthy or whatever. Anyway, we had two of our spray field wells had hits of PFAS or PFCs. One of those wells was removed, it was dug out when we excavated for the new cell. The permit in itself is a compromise that took place over several meetings between Brown County staff, GEI staff, and Pushman Control Agency staff. Originally, they were going to not allow us to spray any effluent on our new spray field, and they were only allowing us to spray bleach on our current existing spray field for this year. But we were able to extend that till 2021, so. Mr. Retton gave an excellent presentation on our landfill at the last meeting we had with MPCA staff. I think he educated them a little bit as far as PFAS is concerned. And I believe that, that he played a, he was a major assistance in us getting this permit. Mr. Retton has a, a presentation that he would like to make to the board at this time. Thank you, Lane. I guess it's just like, Lane had provided the introduction here, we've been here a couple of different times on the landfill project and just want to, I guess, congratulate the county for persevering, and we have a permit. And I mean, like Lane said, from going through the application process in 2008, at least now we have something we can stand up. This is what we have to abide by, not something that anybody from MPCA can float in and say, "Well, test for that in the wells there. Why don't you do that on Thursdays? This is our permit." So, now we have something that we're running against and performing against, so, you know, it's been a while to get there. So, I was going to do a PowerPoint, but then we got to turn around and everything else here, so I'll just go down through the slides if that's okay with everybody. Lot of things happened in the last couple of years in this permitting process, as the bottom slide on the front page says. We have applied last year, we investigated and acquired the North 70 for possible spray field operations, potentially for landfill cover soils, operation soils, and potentially even in the future, landfill expansion, you know, a buffer area, you know, all those type of extra pieces and parts on there. They performed a waste volume to density study, which was required under the certificate of need process to compare landfilling rates with recycling rates. That resulted in the approval of a temporary certificate of need, giving us a three-year extension on the volume for the landfill, because we were about to run out of our certificate of need. So, you need a permit from the state, and you need a certificate of need, otherwise you can't run the landfill. So, we have a certificate of need that takes us to 2021 by this process, in terms of what's going on. So, and I just put a note on there, that also was something that was applied for in 2008, 2012, and reiterated in 2017, and we got something. So, again, took a little bit of a process to get to, we have it. I understand that John has started with the County Solid Waste Plan, that has to be updated by the end of the year. If you remember, we came in front of the board earlier this spring and said that because of the permit status, we put that activity on hold, because we didn't know the outcome of the permit for the landfill. So, John is now open to continue with the County Solid Waste Plan, featuring the landfill as the centerpiece of all the managed waste for the county. We submitted stage one of the nature and extending court concerning the wells for PFOS. The hydrogeologist for the state, I think, is on leave right now, so we don't know exactly his comments on that part, but as I'll mention later, it kind of piles over on top of the permit here and- And again, we'll take a look at what we're doing for stage two or stage three. And as everybody knows, we started the excavation of cell twenty last year in the fall, and so that hole is open and ready to go. For the next phase, like, okay, great, you got a permit, not one. There's lots of criteria that we gotta follow up with. I've added a Microsoft project schedule to the back up here, and the first schedule is for landfill activities for this year. And you can see we have twenty-plus lines of activities that we have to complete with the construction. So, that's our focus right now, is immediately go into construction. The board had said, you didn't want to have a cell constructed without a permit. We wanted to know what type of liner we're building, we wanted to know what was approved for limits, wanted to know what was approved for slopes and grades, and we've got that now. So basically, Keith can proceed with cell twenty, a little bit of excavation, the subgrade, install the clay liner and geomembrane base system, install leachate collection system, complete the documentation report, get NPCA approval, and then we also need to put an insulation layer across the cell to protect the clay according to state code before winter. So, a lot of construction activities facing the landfill in terms of in specific pieces and parts. And I think the board has heard the approval for the excavation, the approval to go out and get liner bids, and basically now the rest of the construction can proceed under the permit. The existing spray field is still in use, as Lane said, so we need to take a look at where we are with that. We need to start aerating the lagoons like the normal process, we need to check out our force main, check out what the fuel conditions are, and actually maximize to the extent possible the existing spray field. The outlook is, the landfill produces between one point three and one point five million gallons of leachate a year for the last five years, and for this year, we're expecting a similar quantity. The existing spray field can take about a million gallons based on past operations, because it's a smaller footprint than we had in the past. So, we might be looking at a half a million gallons, but what do we do with that? And I could talk about that a little bit later here. So, operations, the operations continue, I was talking to Keith in the hallway here. We gotta continue filling, and if you drill past the landfill lately, you can see that we're way above grade, we're trying to figure out roads and access to get us to later on this fall. So Keith and I were talking about where is that going to be, so we can move the insulation layer in. Keith has got a plan for putting intermediate cover soils over any exposed waste, dress up the landfill, areas that aren't gonna be filled on for the next three, four, or five years, or to be capped, will get seeded on it. We gotta manage the tire storage area according to the new permit in terms of quantities and shipping stuff out, white goods, electronics there, the normal inspections, the normal monitoring, monitoring reports in the middle. We've had cement basin cleaning on the agenda for about two years. Okay, to take the cattails out, so, you know, again, that type of it. And then we're switching back and forth with roads until we can get cell twenty up and running, so the road construction. So, basically, on these two pages, you can see there's a lot of activities over the coming months of the landfill, the beginning operations. So, I should probably put this first, what did we get in the permit? What did we win on? You know, what's the benefit of where we are besides just knowing the rules? Well, we did get the two-foot clay liner and sixty-mil base liner system. We switched over away from just the soil four-foot clay. So that construction cost is about a wash, because we had to go off-site for getting clays. And if we would stayed with the four-foot of clay, that would have been much more expensive to go off and get four feet of clay all to the site for base liner construction, than to use some of the site clay, some of off-site clay, and put a sixty-mil. The sixty-mil liner on the bottom also opens us up to potential leachate recirculation in the future as a management technique for some of the leachate. And we can't do leachate recirculation on anything that's clay lined, it can only be on the plastic one. So, we've kept construction cost at least equal, if not a little bit faster and a little bit cheaper, and we opened up the window to manage leachate using the lined area for going forward. We revised the base grades, the previous design sloped to the south and to the north, and that required us putting another sump on the north side and extending a force main around, and also limited any potential expansion if you wanted to connect to the north side. So we reversed base grades, we didn't lose any airspace, we maintained the volume of the landfill as the original permitted volume by doing that. We were building the last sump that has to be built. So once we get the force main electric to that, we're done for the rest of the landfill, six cells with just that sump. So we saved probably between fifty and eighty thousand dollars by not having another sump to maintain and pull pumps on and stuff for into the future, and we've opened up expansion. Because we used a sixty-mil liner in the base, we can use a forty-mil plastic liner for the cover. So the previous requirement was a two-foot clay barrier for final cover. Again, that would have had to come from off-site. Now all we need to do is use onsite soils, put a forty-mil geomembrane over the top of the landfill, and put the cover soils on it. So for closure activities going forward, it's a much reduced cost. And I was talking to Lane before the meeting today, that really comes into play today, because we're building cell twenty. If we built cell twenty and still required a clay liner to cover everything, we'd have had to increase our closure funding account and put money into that. By going to the cheaper cover, which is just as good as clay and if not better, we're able to close a bigger area for the same dollars, and your closure fund is fine after the completion of cell twenty, we don't need to adjust that up. So that's a really good advantage, and it comes into play right now today on what's going on.
How much cover has to go on top if we're not putting two feet of clay and we're using the geothermal stuff?
The geomembrane is a forty-mil geomembrane.
Right, and then how much fill above that?
Gotta put three feet of cover, so, same as what you're doing now. So the soil over that remained the same, we just got rid of that two-foot clay that has to come from off-site, because we don't have it readily available on that. So, with three thousand cubic yards per acre for the two feet of final cover, times off-site clay is fifteen to twenty bucks. So, three thousand times twenty bucks, you know, per acre, we're trading that off with a cost of about fifteen thousand dollars for the plastic, so.
Is there more gas collection with the?
The gas, if we go to leachate recirculation in the future, you're exactly right, where we'd be producing gas, if we had to put in an active gas collection system, that plastic cover would allow the extraction much more efficiently than just the clay. So if we move to that, the plastic liner will be better for gas management in the future on what's going on. As Lane says, we did get at least an initial compromise, where they've extended the use of the existing spray field to twenty, twenty-one. And then there's actually, the way Sherry described it when we were talking with her, that has the potential to extend with a permit modification package for how we run leachate forever and stuff. So if we say we want to use part of the existing spray field in the north as part of a future management plan after doing the demonstration study for out there, there's no definitive, this is the end date on the existing spray field, there's some wiggle room on what's going on there. So, you know, our intent would be to maintain the existing spray field as long as we can, recognizing that it's gonna be taken out by cell construction in the future. But use it for what we can, it's there, it's available, it's got wells around it, it's actually very efficient for leachate management. The recycling storage quantities got further defined in the permit, and I think they're high enough to meet everything that you're doing right now. Lane, we talked about truckloads of electronics, tire and stuff. So now instead of saying tires, it says fifteen hundred equivalent units, so there's a measurement on what's going on. So it's easy to manage, and the inspectors to come in and say, yes, we're in compliance with what's going on for that. So it's a little bit more defined there.
So does that, that means that we have to maintain a certain quantity every year of recycling?
No, it's just how much can be stored.
Just the storage, it has nothing to do with volumes.
Yeah, yeah, before it was like, well, there's a trailer and the electronics are outside the trailer. That's gotta be bad, right? Well, now it's units, and it's like if they're outside the trailer and on the concrete, you count up the number of units, and if you're below that number, you're fine and stuff. So it's not a whole canyon of, we don't think they're being stored quite right, or you might have too many here today and stuff. It's something we can work off of definitively. We were kind of in this strange place of how many times do you look for PFOS in the soils on the spray field? We're kind of doing an investigation based on what Mark Rice is telling us to do, and that's been, just cut to the quick, we do one round on the existing spray field. We check the leachate, the soils and the wells once a year, at least under the permit. If we want to do something else outside of the permit, we can. But if you look back at the past data, sometimes we sampled in July, sometimes it was in October, sometimes it was twice a year, sometimes it was once a year. So rather than being undefined at the whim of Mark calling us up and saying, can you check? It's now in the permit as once a year, and that's all you have to do. It's up to you guys to volunteer if you want to do more. And you got ten years of approval and stuff, so the permit is valid. Now, I always say that that comes into play as, as long as it's got an active permit, it's an asset and stuff. So with an active permit in your hand, the landfill's an asset, because it has usable airspace that is a revenue source, depending on how it's managed. Instead of, the landfill is closed and it's a liability, with no assets to counteract the cost of it. So that ten-year permit really allows you now to take a look at that next ten years. When are we closing, what are we doing, what's going on with leachate? And do a financial forecast in terms of what's going on for that. So, lots of good stuff by having a permit in your hand, although we could have hoped for a few more words to be beneficial to us in a couple places. So, immediately what do we have to do? It says, within forty-five days, submit a new sampling and analysis plan. That's because they took the northern spray field out of the permit and put it over into a demonstration research project. And our plan says monitor all the wells, so we gotta take them out of the plan. So that's a pretty minor modification to do. It's changed the tables and changed the number of wells that are on there. And it says, submit a leachate management plan within forty-five days, because our existing one says, we're gonna use the north spray field. So they need a document in their files that says what you're gonna do with leachate for the near future in terms of what's going on. When we talked to them, they said, it's specifically a plan. It's not, this is what you have to do, that we're planning on looking at these things. And so it can be, again, fairly simple to modify what we're doing and to write up in terms of what's going on. Make sure it describes how we're gonna use the existing spray field out to two thousand and twenty-one for sure, and some things like that. So again, it's a fairly simple modification to make that submittal. Then we get into probably more of this, I'll call it a little bit of ALIBA, a little bit of, it's not defined yet, it's a demonstration research project. And they've decided that if the county proceeds with looking how to take PFOS out of leachate, then that leachate can go to the northern spray field. Which all sounds really good, except what is the treatment process? What is the pre-treatment process? How complete is that treatment process? Do we take out PFOS completely, or do we just change them a little bit? And so if they're a hundred, can we change them to ninety-eight? Can we still spray them? How many times do we have to monitor? How many times do we have to test? None of that's defined right now, and that's what the demonstration research project will be. It's a literature search on what technologies work. It's a cost evaluation to see if we even want to spend that kind of money on it in terms of what's happening. It's very flexible, they issue a demonstration research project with a three-year window to try it, and that can be approved up to seven different increments. So you can theoretically use a demonstration research project, you know, for twenty years, by just keep doing the renewals. And some of the people in the state have used it, like leachate recirculation has been done as a demonstration research project. And they just keep updating it every three years, rather than an official permit modification package. On that, so, that's kind of an unknown. What is not really an unknown is, should we go down that path, at what degree it's gonna cost? And this is where Lane and I have talked things over, and as of today, we're not ready to present a path forward for the demonstration research project to the commissioners, other than to let you know something has to be submitted by December thirty-first, describing something to deal with leachate out there under this research project, or any possibility of your northern spray field ever being used goes away. So we need to do something as an insurance policy to be playing these next three years game as things are defined in terms of what's going on. One of the, I guess, the upfront costs are, I'm sure they're gonna want the wells installed, and I'm sure they're gonna want the background chemistry done to the wells. So, the groundwater wells could be someplace between twenty and forty thousand dollars to install, because unlike just being a regular landfill well in the past, now they're PFOS detection devices, and we have to make sure that no PFOS gets induced when we drill. Because if they come back with nine parts per trillion in it, we can't even use the spray field, because the spray field's already impacted. So, it's gonna, we recommend that if we go ahead with this, the wells are to be installed in two steps. Shallow wells first, develop, check to make sure they're clean, that they're open and ready to go, and then we would drill through that water-bearing zone, through the underlying clay to the next one. Because if there's any PFOS in that shallow water, I don't want to drill a well and drag it down to the next one lower. Now we're getting closer to usable aquifers in the region instead of just the shallow one. So that's why there's a little bit of elevated cost, is it needs to be done a little bit cleaner, needs to be done in two stages, and that all results in time. We have five wells on there to do the full background characterization for four rounds, and that is another twenty-year type of cost range. The DRP and negotiations of whatever we want to put in there. I put a window in there now of fifteen to twenty thousand to write up the study. But I also told Lane, if you want a two-page letter that says, our research project is this, I can do a two-page letter to meet the timeframe. The procedure is a literature search, a full flow diagram information, and tons of detail, and we're gonna monitor twice on Sunday and three times on Thursdays for these parameters. But I literally can give you a two-page letter that says, we're gonna try this. The state's gonna say that's incomplete, but we submitted the DRP by December thirty-fourth. We're in the game, we're negotiating the DRP and stuff to get past that clause. So hopefully, we're better than that, but I'll give you a safety valve of saying there is something that can be submitted very, very inexpensively, that just says we're in the game on that. To design and construct something, some of the ways you can treat for PFOS are carbon absorption. We checked into canisters and rental and running those for about a half a million gallons worth of water. That would run fifty thousand dollars to do a demonstration of whether carbon works. Resin canisters, basically like water softener in a home, there's a specialty resin, you do a recharge of it, it reacts with the water and takes the PFOS out. Those are smaller canisters, so theoretically, the cost would be much greater, because they clog off and need recharging more, and it's specialty resins instead of just carbon. So that's probably more expensive than the carbon. We've discussed a wetland treatment system, and a brief description of that is... And a brief description of that is, leachate is basically a soup of chemicals and biological activity. If I dump that through carbon, I'm gonna clog the carbon. Okay? So almost anybody at your treatment plants is gonna say, when the water comes into a treatment plant, we have a great big grid chamber and we pull off, we have a screen pulls off the tennis shoes and baseballs. And then the next part is a grid chamber. Then the next part is our digester clarifier system. By the time we get around here to our aeration basins, we almost have pure, clean water. And then if somebody wants to do disinfection of that with ultraviolet, we got clean water to do that with. You don't put the disinfection at the front end of the treatment plant because it's ineffective. PFOS treatment with carbon is like that ultraviolet at the end of the pipe just before it dumps in the river. Is you need clean water to take PFOS out of the water. Otherwise, it just clogs off the system. So if we did a wetland, you could put the leachate through that. It would filter the leachate, it would use up the nitrogen, the phosphorus, absorb some of the metals and potentially have a cleaner water to treat for PFOS. And who knows, maybe some of the PFOS stays in the structure that we did for a wetland. So that's why that one's in there. Not that wetlands specifically take PFOS out of the water, but it takes all the other nutrients out that get in the way if we have to treat for PFOS on there. There's specialty chemicals. There's a university professor up at University of Minnesota who's done some research work. It's discussed in their literature as a coagulant. And a coagulant is just like coagulant for blood or whatever. It just stops it up, clogs it up. Or a flocculent in a treatment plant where it specifically attracts little particles, makes them a big particle and they settle out. So specialty chemicals that supposedly can take PFOS out of the water. I haven't talked to the gentleman yet, but I'm guessing he did it with clean water with PFOS in it to see if it worked versus all the interference of what we see in leachate or wastewater. So there's specialty chemicals out there. And then there's RO systems. We've mentioned numerous times the RO system that Candy Ojai has for their black box treatment system. They have an RO out there that according to, call it innuendo and other comments back and forth that Lane and I have received, is doing great for everything except boron. And you guys have high boron also. So they're now being asked to take a look at it at the back end of their system. Hey, you're doing really good at everything, but boron's not so good for you guys to dump your water into the stormwater pond under a groundwater discharge or surface application. So even their black box isn't quite making all the things that are in leachate come out perfectly clean on that. But a demonstration project with an RO unit, again, it would come on the back of a semi, just like the carbon canisters, and you could run leachate through it. Those are very, very selective. Those clog off very quickly if there's any biological activity. Chlorines attack them and stuff. So again, they work great with clean water on that and stuff. But if you're dirtier, your water with other stuff in it, other than dissolved constituents, they plug off. So that's kind of the two-second overview of a DPR in terms of what's going on. And I guess I kind of want to stop there and mention to you that we're not prepared today to tell you what this program's gonna be on that. I guess our focus is operations and construction. And I think to get through 2018, our most direct path is to take a look at trucking leachate at some volume to take care of any excess we might have from the spray field to New Ulm. Establish a price for that, conditions for that. They told us they can take one truck a day, but they can't take three without building a tank. They think they can treat everything for us. So far, there's not a regulation or a standard that says we can't go to them. So as part of a side issue to this demonstration project is we don't know the cost of just coming to New Ulm with leachate for going forward as an option. So I think that should be our first priority is establishing that. Getting the ability to take several hundred thousand gallons out of the lagoons and get it down here. That would actually give us some flexibility. We don't know if there's high PFOS in the old closed area or if it's in cell one or if it's gonna come from cell 20. So if we start checking where the concentrations are, maybe we take the strongest leachate and bring it to New Ulm. And we take the more stormwater related stuff, aerate it at the landfill, check the chemistry, put it on the existing spray field and not risk any other, you know, potential changes to conditions or making things worse on there. So I didn't put that in a slide. Lane and I just briefly talked about it. It would probably be a proposal that's sent out as an RFP to haulers qualified to haul liquid waste like septic pumpers and stuff. Can they provide the right volume, the right trucks, the right equipment? What do we have to install for pumps out of the landfill to make that happen? And then get a contract in place with New Ulm that says, here's how it's gonna happen. And get that process started so that we know where we can go today versus between cities with leachate. And then take a look at this demonstration project, start some negotiations with NPCA and define some cost in terms of what's going on. Start in on the light side of things of making the leachate cleaner as part of our demonstration. And then tackle the PFOS treatment piece of it when there's a little bit more data on how the world is handling that and PFOS in terms of what's going on. Rather than trying something and knowing it's gonna fail because of biological clogging or something.
Mr. Chairman, is there anything in the new permit that requires us to pump out of the sumps in the west lined area?
There's nothing specific in the permit that talks about managing leachate at a specific spot. The generic code that says, when you have a leachate collection system like we do in the lined area, you have to maintain the leachate head to one foot. But there's no specific line item in here that says, go over for these manholes and pump a specific quantity.
So that remains an option.
It means a flexible post-closer care item for the closed portion of the site.
Okay. So I need to see your driver's license.
Not specifically.
Because that could be a different world out on that west side.
Yeah, that's part of, what do we have coming from where? Cell 20 is a brand-new cell and it's predominantly stormwater? Okay, let's see what that's like. Is that a blending liquid or is that a straight, let's try the trials with that leachate? Because there's less chance of plugging off the carbon with the clean leachate. So we can at least give it a try. If that has 30, and lo and behold, we can reduce it to 10 because it's clean, it's the cheap way to do that with high success probability on that rather than getting the thickest soup we have and hoping it doesn't clog the whole system of what's going on.
So what you're saying is that we can draw leachate from specific parts of the landfill? Is that, you know, are they?
They're all, the existing landfill sumps are currently piped directly to the lagoons. And when they're pumped, they co-mingle in the lagoons. But if we come back and do a couple of characterization tests at individual spots, we may determine that we don't want that co-mingling to occur. We'll put leachate from this area in lagoon one, co-mingle the rest in lagoon two or possibly even add a small storage tank and say, we're gonna work out of a portable baker tanks for a year and a half because that's the way to go with it.
So we have them tested individually in each one, maybe.
I'm assuming that's what you're doing. As part of the demonstration research project or the nature and extent. Stage two of the nature and extent was to take a look at not only where is the leachate coming from and its characterization is supposedly, and the literature says this, I don't have personal knowledge, PFOS floats. So if your sampling procedure is to sample the top six inches of the lagoon, that's where, if the lagoon was sitting quiet without aeration for a couple of days, the PFOS would float to the top and you would theoretically get a higher concentration. Well, we're talking with Minnesota Valley Testing. The guy walks down the side slope of the lagoon, dips the jar in the water, puts a cap on it, walks back up. So he's sampling the top six inches. So are we getting a worst-case PFOS reading than you would get if he sampled while it was being aerated or while it's being pumped and thoroughly mixed in terms of what's going on? Or if we were pumping and thoroughly mixing it, would we be stirring up all the solids that are normally settled out when we shut off the aerator so that we can spray to the spray field without plugging the nozzles? So it's those type of activities that we need to take a look a little bit better in the definition.
When will we get that data? Was the timeline of obtaining, you know, at least getting a sense of where those levels are? Is that gonna be at the end of this year or in 2019 roughly?
Well, without, the NPCA guy, Mark Rize, is not there right now. He's on family leave or he's out of the office. And he's the lead on the nature and extent report. So I'm hesitant to jump into stage two of the nature and extent, which was to do exactly that. The hope would be is if we can reconnect with NPCA, do some of that selective sampling over the summer because by the end of the year, we would have it defined. Especially with the aspect of pumping down the New Ulm. If we bring them leachate out of lagoon one, it's gonna have a certain VOD and a certain suspended solids and a certain nitrate. And the whole pond is gonna be that. If we pump directly out of an old manhole, we don't know what that's gonna be to haul directly to them in terms of concentrations and stuff. I do know if I take 6,000 gallons out of that manhole, put it in a half a million gallons of the existing lagoon, pretty much looks like the existing lagoon. So I can't tell you today, is it better to take that 6,000 gallon tank directly to New Ulm? Or are they gonna want some characterization of it on a load-by-load basis before we can dump it? That's again, something we need to talk to New Ulm about, how do they want to receive it? Or how do they want it blended to make sure what's going on? Related to that, and I mentioned like reverse osmosis. We have to be very, very careful when you take a reverse osmosis system. Is if you're familiar with maple syrup, most of the people concentrating maple syrup use reverse osmosis. They put the raw sap into the reverse osmosis and it thickens it into a syrup so they don't have to boil as much down. So if you take that image of taking your leachate, putting it in reverse osmosis and making a thick syrup of all the chemicals in a smaller volume of water, the concentrations of those chemicals obviously increase because the clean water left through the membrane. You can cross a magic line called hazardous waste when you have a variety of chemicals in that liquid if you concentrate it too much. And I have heard of people running reverse osmosis systems and running them at 50% efficiency instead of 80 because they don't like the color of the syrup coming out the back end. And that is when it's this level of concentrations, they can put it back in their landfills as leachate recirculation. If they boil it down a little bit more and make it higher concentration, it turns over into hazardous waste and they gotta truck it off for incineration at a liquid waste incineration unit someplace. So that's why in terms of what we're playing with here, some of these technologies have to be researched a little bit more compared to what you guys have. Some of them can go right to the field as a field scale. Some of them have to be played around with in the lab at a bench scale by a manufacturer to see what they're gonna make for us. Because we don't want them to come to the field and make something we don't want. So that's what I've got. I guess that boils down to what I remember from pieces and parts of the meeting is, construction of cell 20 was approved last year with conditions of only excavation and then only liner. We have a permit, so basically, construction, the way I understand it, is approved to proceed to the completion of all of leachate collection system and documentation report. GBI submitted a proposal last year for the construction documentation and because there wasn't a permit, that was approved but put on hold until the permit. So that that proposal to do construction documentation and work with Keith on the report and stuff like that should be proceeding. The county solid waste plan, which was put on hold by Lane because of permit questions and on the recommendation to the board, is now approved to proceed so John can continue on the solid waste plan. We need to begin, that's something I think Lane and John could probably handle, is a new certificate of need for a 10-year window instead of this three-year window. So it matches up with your 10-year permit. So you have both parts to say you have that asset for 10 years. But that's probably a county, you know, staff can take care of that. And then we need to come back with how we're gonna proceed on this demonstration project. And what's the result of coming up with the cost to truck leachate? And present that with the board with a real schedule instead of a draft schedule on what's going on here. And that, I think, is gonna take a couple of meetings with the solid waste committee to make sure they provide the direction for where we're gonna go and the financial overview with the 10-year window here. So I don't think there's a specific action today because the permit frees up previously conditioned approvals. But we just wanted to make sure we gave the presentation to the board as to where everything stood.
Oh, I had a question, but he answered it.
Clarification of the leachate. What compared the, compared the current lined area of the leachate we pump every day, the quality of that compared to any other leachate that we manage? Because if the lined area is very low or low PFOS to begin with, you could simplify some of your studies.
Right, yeah, and that's what I said. If cell 20, which is going to be the brand-new cell that only has 20 feet of waste on it, gets rainwater through it a couple of times, that leachate could be very low in concentrations of any chemicals because there's only 20 feet or 10 feet of waste out there. The clay-lined torsion has probably close to 70 feet of waste and the leachate has to come all the way through that. But we're extracting it rapidly and keeping it coming out of there. The closed area, not only does the leachate trickle down through the waste, the waste over there is kind of undefined, except whoever saw it get dumped at one time. And it sits there and it cooks for a while and we only extract it intermittently on that. So generically, the closed landfill site should be higher in concentrations of constituents, whether it's biological, chemical, whatever. The clay-lined area, because we're pumping leachate out of the leachate system and stuff on a regular basis, is a little bit weaker. And the new cell we're building is going to be quote the cleanest just due to the volume of water going through just a little bit of waste from the left corner.
It just seems critical that we test the leachate in the lined area and each sum in the lined area. Because since that lined area started, we've also started household hazardous waste collection, a whole lot more recycling. And if that leachate is relatively clean, then our problem is waste in the old areas.
Potentially, yes. So I agree. But it can be defined. We can come back with a schedule on what we want to do there. It's about $500 a shot to take a look to see if there's PFOS in there or not. So we want to make sure that whatever we sample is, it's representative of what's going on and that it's sampled correctly in terms of what's going on for the concentrations. I don't have any doubt, told Lane before the meeting, as an example for you here. They did a study just recently, watching the news last Friday night. Are there plastics in beer? Well, Milwaukee, got a little bit, a couple of microbreweries going. They tested 10 microbreweries and lo and behold, there's microplastics, filaments and beads in beer that they're making in Milwaukee. Now, I'm sure the whole focus was, there's plastic in beer. But at the beginning of the story, they said, they- But at the beginning of the story, they said they all use city water. Nobody's bringing in their own water, nobody's pumping from a well. So doesn't that mean city water has plastics in it? And to the degree that they're making beer and filtering stuff, it may or may not be the same concentration of city water. So if there's microplastics in city water, there's probably microplastics and PFOS in a similar node everywhere. But we definitely can take a look at concentrations that changes in industry, the changes in household hazardous waste, the changes of higher suppression forms and stuff, obviously have changed.
That's my other thought here is that we might find that the old cell doesn't have it in because the PFCs weren't being used or utilized or whatever it was. And that may be the other direction.
Wasn't a lot of stain resistant carpeting in 1970, and Teflon was probably pretty scarce in the 60s.
So that may be some of the reverse. So that's what we've got to test and see what we know what's coming out of there.
Started in 1972, back on the last. I wasn't there.
But yeah, that's definitely, that's what we have to take a look at, and that's part of the demonstration part. What do we want to try to pretreat or treat? You know, where do we think we're gonna get the best, you know, result? So if the old landfill makes 10,000 gallons of leachate and it can go to New Ulm, do we even wanna play with it if New Ulm can take it? The clay lined area makes a million gallons, and the new plastic line cell 20 makes 300,000. How do we deal with those volumes coming from different areas in terms of what we have for constituents? To make sure that whatever we try is successful. There's no sense starting something if it doesn't have a chance.
As far as the demonstration project, is there gonna be assistance from either MPCA or the state or federal government? Because obviously, this would be helpful for them too. I mean, there's others that are gonna be going through the same process that Brown County did. I'm assuming there's gonna be a little, you know, direction from them versus we're gonna be developing this on our own. I don't believe that that's...
I think, Lane, you made that comment to them that you're not the research arm of MPCA.
Yeah, something like that. I did speak with one of the higher managers in the agency and asked them for some assistance from the agency or from the state for that. His response was to give him some costs or proposed cost, and he would see what he can do to free up something. There was not a guarantee, I can't promise you anything. He's looking into it, hopefully. And we will, maybe this is something for our legislators to add.
Well, the university guy that developed this chemical is coagulant. Universities have money, and the end of the article specifically said he's looking for a field application. So maybe if the university wants to try something, the hazard of that is, what are you trying? What chemical are you bringing to us? What are you putting into this? What's the potential failure? And do you make something that we can't land apply or bring to New Ulm? You own it. So, you know, if he wants to try it, that's well and good. If they pay for it, even better. But we wanna make sure that whatever they do, we don't own the leachate when they're all done, unless we can get rid of it on the spray field.
I'm just hoping for some guidance from either the state or our university or something like that. And also, there's funding, I'm assuming, for some of these projects too, you know, with this lawsuit that they just settled. You know, there's money out there too that I would assume we can go after to help us with this too.
Looking into seeing where that's at.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, leachate is the biggest headache we have here. But the permit also puts on record a remaining capacity of 1.6 million cubic yards, which is at the current rate, 30-plus years of space. So there's a lot of public utility on that property if we can manage leachate in a reasonable fashion.
And during the conversations with the state is like, they just blink their eyes and go, well, why don't you just do leachate recirculation? And so, put the leachate right back in the landfill, we're okay with that. You don't have to test it, you don't have to look at it, you don't have to smell it, just put it right back. Our problem is that we only have a little area with the plastic liner. So with more area being lined, if they maintain that attitude, there's potential to put half or more of your leachate right back into the landfill to promote decomposition. That comes with the cost of active gas extraction. And the reason you can keep dumping leachate in is gas comes out of the landfill at 100% humidity, and you burn it in a fler. So you're drying up...
We can only put the leachate back on cells or plastic line, which we are burning now, so... Because we've said that in the past, why can't we just put it back on?
Yep, so we're several years away from that, but we're close. So again, with a 30-year outlook, is that something for year five through 30 potentially?
Any other questions?
Good to have the update and get a handle of where we're at with the direction of the motion mix-up and where we're filing.
I'll second that. It's, as he said too, it's nice to hear this, it's a little better than the last time.
It's a lot better than the last time.
Has the membrane been ordered, or how is that?
Got the bids here today. We've given $400 of 141,000. Two of them are closed, so I'll get that later probably this afternoon. It'll be, looks like it'll be GSI out of Wisconsin, which we've used before.
Sorry? All right, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye, aye.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. So we've got more reports, so this is done.
I'm done.
Okay. All I would have is Sutriels. We elected new board members. We had a special meeting last week. Tonight is our regular meeting. The new director, Joseph Manuel, was there. Interaction with him was good. Hopefully, moving forward, we can do some good things. The new bylaws, we discussed those and made a few tweaks to that. There was the, between the bylaws and the corporate, the corporate letter that would be looked at also. We reviewed all that and gave back to the lawyer. Hopefully, we got those back tonight or this week for sure. Once that happens, that lawyer will send it to Sibley and Brown County, and then we'll look at it and move forward from there. We approved the audit. The audit had been completed. I don't believe there's anything unusual out of that. Everything was normal. So again, we meet tonight and do the procedures to move forward with the bylaws and move that forward to the counties over there. I believe we covered it today.
Area 2, RC, RCA. Not too much exciting happened in there. We did approve a contract amendment for a grade stabilization. It's about $95,000. That would be up in Redwood County. Got an update on legislative sessions. Gonna bring this, it's May 3rd. Here, I didn't know exactly where it's at, but there's two Senate files. One in the House, one in the Senate. Million dollars of bonding for Area 2, RC, RCA. And we're hoping, mostly it's Area 2. Hopefully, that'll happen soon. Getting a little close on the funding, they don't come up with that.
Still, little conversation about liability insurance for the dam, but we're getting rate of progress on it. So we're there, and we talked about budget for 19 for Area 2. Pretty much took care of what we did that day.
Did we go through correspondence in the computer? C1 is minutes of April 24th. C2 is extension master garden minutes. C3 is town hall meetings listed there as far as where they're at. We can go through that. Calendar, I think, are they next week?
Next week, Lane.
Okay, and then C4 is NACO. Assuming that's an update. Annual conference on July 13.
Going to Nashville.
So I think there is money budgeted for that, I believe.
For what?
For what? Somebody's interested in that. Let's try and watch. That's it for correspondence. If there's not anything else, we'll go to calendar.
Sutriels at 6:00 p.m.
Open the rest of it.
Open.
Sutriels, 6:00 p.m.
Open the rest of it.
Okay, the 16th?
Open.
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 Um, I've got a USAC sustainability Committee meeting at 8:30.
Open.
The 17th?
State Media Meeting in St. Peter.
Open.
Open.
I have a regular USAC meeting at 3:30.
Open.
18. I have a pre-audit meeting, 9:00 a.m. here.
Open.
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 That is Kern Spencer's retirement party. Love that. Light, see how my corn butter's doing?
Okay, the 21st.
I have a workforce joint pourers meeting, 4:00 p.m. in Mankato.
Open.
In the Mankato, 6:30. I'm open. Energy Board in Slayton at 1:00.
One of the things to share, there's that, and I guess it's more of a question. 1:30, I've written down as an Alice presentation. Am I correct on that?
We do have Alice on Monday, the 21st at 1:30.
Yep, that's what I wrote. So where is that, here?
LEC training room.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Aiden, Commissioner's certainly welcome for that. I think several attended the first one also.
Is this the, is there just gonna be two, as I understand? Okay, thank you.
Let's see, are we on the 23rd?
22nd.
22nd.
Just the Commissioner's meeting, otherwise I'm open.
Board meeting and PAC meeting.
Board. Board.
Board. Commissioner Bergen, Stevenson. In front of the PAC and after the board meeting, could we get a building committee meeting? There's a request that we... So if we could tenant it, we plan after the board meeting, building committee.
So there's a PAC meeting at 22nd?
That's my understanding. Commissioner Berg, was that confirmed for you, the PAC?
I can't answer that.
We'll double check that. But if we could do a building committee after this.
Okay. Where do we get to 22nd? 23rd?
Open. Open.
There's a legislative town hall meeting, 9 to 10 at Quonklaire here in New Ulm.
Okay, so I'm assuming we got Sleepy I.
Yeah. Springfield is 11:12, that day at community room.
There's even lunch there, I think.
It was in the correspondence area.
Yeah, we go back to, it was 3:03, 7:15 asleep.
We'll go to the town hall at 11 o'clock in St. Peter.
All right, the 24th?
Open.
Open.
Community Health, 8:15, exec board and wellness meeting at 2 o'clock.
We've got community health, exec board at 8:15. Open. Yeah, 25th?
Open.
Open.
You should be at the wellness too.
Yeah. What time is it?
2 o'clock.
Okay.
What do you have, 25th?
24th. Okay, we're on the 25th.
Open.
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 28th is Memorial Day. 29th, which is two weeks out.
29th, we don't have a board meeting?
Correct. It would be the 5th Tuesday. And Wednesday and Thursday, you might have a few days off.
This is a perfect lead into my next.
Uh-oh.
So on April 16th, I received a invitation from the White House for a conference call with the Special Assistant to the President discussing opportunity zones. If you remember back to the opportunity zones were, where there were areas in the United States that are set for investment, to get investment breaks, to bring blighted areas up, and it's a Trump initiative. Okay, I got that, I saw it. Didn't have time to read or respond to it, so I didn't, I just kept it in my minutes here or in my emails. So then on April 30th, I get a notice from an invitation to the White House. And this time, I didn't, because I thought it was the same webinar that was, you know, retalking about that, I didn't read it right away. And then Julie Ring from AMC sent out a notice and said, if you got an invitation for the White House, it is legitimate. That's, you're actually, you know, it's not a, because we get the junk we get. So here it says, the White House Office of Intergovernmental Affairs would like to invite you to Minnesota County Commissioners' White House Conference and White House Residence Tour on May 31st at 9:30 a.m. And at 10:30 is the conference. And so, not thinking very clearly, I decided, well, you know what? I'll listen to a webinar and see what they have to say. So I fill out this registration and send it back. And the registration was quite lengthy, and security questions were prevalent all over the place in it. And I got done and I sent it off. And then I went, boy, there was a lot of security questions in there. And I started looking at it closer and realized they wouldn't have a webinar of a White House tour. But, you know, this must be an actual, and it is an actual invitation to the White House for an upcoming event to develop working relationship with the White House and county commissioners from the state of Minnesota. Good for those of you who... So at first, I was like, well, that's ridiculous, I'm not going. And then I thought, well, would there be any value to going to it? I don't know. Would it be more valuable than going to a NACO annual event? You know, one of those meetings I've never gone, I've never gone to one. But I don't know. That's all the information I have. And so then they sent me back an email that said that, you know, we'll be updating you with further information. They note on here that there's no discrepancy, there can't be any discrepancies between the ID and the Secret Service, and that you can't give this to anyone else, and the Secret Service will not permit you to bring iPads or portfolios and yada, yada, yada. So, but this is already on May 31st now, which is obviously just around the corner.
Mr. Chairman?
What are your thoughts here?
You know, first of all, I mean, would you have the...
I could do it, you know, I'd go out and turn around and come right back. I mean, that's what it amounts to, but like, I did the leachate.
Because I think all, I think with NACO, you know, I mean, all of that, I mean, we're pretty conservative, but I think there's certainly a benefit...
but I think there's certainly a benefit to that, to be represented. And I mean, I think this potentially could be a nice opportunity. You know, at least representing Minnesota and our county. And I mean, as far as budgeting, I don't know what the past practice is, but are we sending anyone to NACO? Because if we're not, I mean, from a budgeting standpoint, you know...
Well, this would be cheaper.
Right. But I'm just saying from something that's outside budgeting.
Didn't Andy go the last time?
It's been a while and no one, no one...
No one's gone since I've been on the board for 10 years and a half.
Just for good order, if you're interested in attending that, it probably would be good to do an RBA for next Tuesday to have the board support that visit and then the audit trails. And as Commissioner Booker noted, no one has expressed interest in NACO, so the budget could be addressed.
Can AMC help with some of the details for its travel? I'm assuming there's others going to there.
I, and I had no idea, and that's why I was wondering if anybody else even got the invitation. So how they pick criteria, I haven't got a clue, I couldn't tell you. But not as far, no, AMC was not offering any travel assistance or anything. They were just confirming that if you got an invitation, that it was actually legitimate, it wasn't, you know, whatever.
I would support.
And, you know, I really don't know, it just says they wanna develop a working relationship between the White House and County Commissioners from the state of Minnesota. They have no idea what that means.
And Mr. Chair, I, you know, I have nothing directly related to that from a County Commissioner standpoint, but I've been at some of those meetings sometimes, like when I was in Atlantic, when you get invited to those things. I mean, sometimes the context, you know, it's all, you know, part of the big picture and I certainly think there's a benefit. I would, you know, I would certainly support something like that.
Mr. Chairman, another option, if there's consensus, we can note that in the minutes, if there was consensus for that attendance and frankly, we should be getting, we could work with GAO and get flights lined up as soon as possible.
That would be the only thing, I would wonder if we're at, what are we, the 15th today or any? And this is the 31st, so you've got about two weeks here, but I would need to contact them and, you know, get more information obviously as well. I am registered.
Julie may have some...
Yeah, she might have some information too, so...
But we can help get the flights lined up when you know a specific country.
So should we bring this back next week?
Bring it back next week, but if you're, I mean, you need to look at airline tickets and get that taken care of.
Let me get this week to get to the brass tacks of tidying and all of that kind of stuff to make sure there's no snags there and then let's bring it back next week.
You did pass on security plans.
So far, evidently, yeah.
That's a good sign.
They dug into your past too far, haven't they?
Would that allow you enough time to get the arrangements though, a week? I don't know, it's tight.
Well, hotel would probably be higher than flights.
So if we had like, kind of like, you know, following the former discussion, if we had the consensus, that would, that would give probably the authorization to at least get those arrangements made and then after that, we could, as far as the audit trail, we can bring it up at RBA?
If you feel, Mr. Chair, that by consensus, we could support that, we can already note that in the minutes as a calendaring item, by consensus, the attendance was okay. We can certainly go that route.
I think that's...
Okay, we'll note that in the minutes from the discussion and the consensus.
Okay. Is there anything else? Calendering done, I think, unless there's other business, but you're in the meeting.